Okay, so let's get started. We're gonna start with our first item on the agenda of the Pledge of Allegiance. You all set? All right. I'll have to stand up. Eric is correct. Stand up and try to back up a little bit. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God. Okay, all right. Public speak. Man, if you could go through everybody.
One second before you start that. Sloan, I believe you're not muted, my dear. And we heard you saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go through. First, we have Mike and Kathy Palazzi.
Hello.
How is everyone?
You here?
Yeah.
Kathy, would you like to participate in public speak?
Oh, because we're going to later on.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Crompton?
Yes.
Would you like to participate in public speak?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay.
Shannon Loudon?
Yes, I would like to participate in public speak.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just wondered if you were developing a roster. Okay. First of all, I'm very proud of the Andover Elementary School for making it through one week without any COVID cases. We reopened. We've got a fantastic new superintendent. Everybody has just done tremendous work to allow everyone to return full-time, in-person to Andover Elementary School, and I just wanted to pass along my congratulations in that regard. Now I'll go through your agenda real quick, just to put in my input. Hope you approve, as did the Board of Education, the town accounting software. We voted last Wednesday for Edwards.gov. We also put on both Laura Edwards and Chris Bernard is our representative to the search committee for the Assistant Finance Officer. So I believe you're gonna vote on your representation for the Board of Selectmen to that committee, and hopefully that will get started very quickly. Loved all the stuff with regard to acquiring open space and the pollinator pathway. Highly affirm those and hope those are acted upon in the affirmative by the Board of Selectmen this evening. And two more, and also the Agent Orange monument, highly supportive of Jerry's efforts in that regard, having worked with Vietnam veterans myself when I worked in Washington DC, and just knowing how much they've been drastically affected by that. So two important things with regard to your voting on the yard signs and political yard signs this evening. I highly recommend that you not put any restrictions on those yard signs, so we're not afoul of any First Amendment rights or whatnot, and that you allow us to put things on public property in town. As far as on private property, the one thing I'll say is, in many pieces of property, and I don't know how this can be addressed, I believe that the 15-foot rule may put some signs all the way back to people's front doors and really not visible from the road, which is the intent. So I don't know what we can do in that regard, how we can both keep traffic safe and also allow people to put up their yard signs, as well as putting up yard signs on public property. So I encourage you to allow that on public property within reason. And finally, just having been aware that the culprits for the graffiti that was put all over the wonderful library mural are going to be in court this week, as far as I understand. And I don't know what input Eric has or the Board of Selectmen have as far as recommendations for their sentencing, but certainly if found guilty of those crimes for which they've been accused and indicted, fines, monetary fines, and/or cleanup responsibilities or whatnot, but certainly monetary fines can be imposed for that. And I think that's really important, that the town's insurance not be responsible for that, but that in fact, that the three alleged criminals, from what I understand, be held to pay the fines, so that the town of Andover doesn't have to pay for any of that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Shannon.
Next up, we have Charlotte Nelson. Would you like to participate in public speak?
Hey, I would just like to echo Shannon's sentiments in regard to the posting of signs on private property.
Charlotte, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, no. Can you hear me at all?
Barely.
Okay. A view on our responsibility posting of sign on private property?
Is anyone else able to hear her?
No.
Nope.
Do you want to try again in a minute?
The other thing, Charlotte, do you want to text me and I can pass along your comments?
Okay.
Who else?
Can we skip and move to someone else and then we'll come back? Let's go. Anybody else? Elaine? Public speak?
Nope. I get to talk under EDC, so I'm good.
All right, Megan? Public speak?
Yes, so I just had a quick question under, so obviously I'm gonna speak to 5A on the agenda, 6B. Wayne Fort resigned from Inland Wetlands. I'm not sure if that was a typo on the agenda, or if he also receded on another commission that he's resigning from.
Okay. I'll have to look at that. Okay.
Do we have to wait, or can we just speak?
Well, Brian, you can go next. Go.
All right, so I just wanted to touch on what Shannon was saying about the sign law. And I think a way that we could make it work for everyone is follow the Mansfield ordinance here. I could read it to you, or I can send it to Eric, but it basically says, "All signs shall be located so they do not block traffic control signs or devices, street signs, street or driveway intersections, or sightlines for existing signs on neighboring property." And then they put in, "Wherever possible, signs shall be set back a minimum distance of 30 feet from any intersection." And that's the A section of the law. So they put it wherever possible. So for the B section, it says, "Unless specific authority is granted by the State Department of Transportation or the Mansfield Traffic Authority, no sign shall be located within the state or town street right of way. Wherever possible, signs shall be set back a minimum distance of 10 feet from any property line." So they're putting it closer to 10 feet instead of 15 feet, and then they're giving a "wherever possible" for individuals who cannot put the sign 10 feet back and it'll still be visible. So I think that's a good compromise. And something to look at. I can send that over to you if you want.
Okay. Please send it over, Brian. Okay, who's next? Anyone else? Catherine? Hank?
No, I don't have anything.
Joanne? She's good?
Yes.
All right, Nick, I think we're okay. Did I miss anyone?
Yeah, Amy Knox?
Amy? Okay.
Kincaid is all set.
All right, and let's go back. Charlotte?
Real quickly, just on behalf of Charlotte Nelson, she was echoing my sentiments, Shannon's sentiments, with regard to not placing any restrictions on yard signs on private property, other than potential line of sight and safety restrictions on such, and encouraged the Board of Selectmen to not place unnecessary restrictions on signs on private property. Thank you.
Are we gonna, we're gonna look at, we should look at some type of size restriction, you know, where you get bigger than a four by eight.
It's in our package.
In the package. Yeah, I thought so.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We have an extremely long agenda, so we're gonna try to get through this. So additions and deletions. Members, do we have any additions and deletions?
Yep, Jeff, I got a few. First, add item 9P, neglected cemetery account. Add 9Q, hunting on town property. Add 9R.
9Q, hunting?
Yep.
Go ahead.
9R, acquisition of the clock property.
I got 20 bucks, says he makes it to Z.
Not today. And the last thing is, I'd like to move Agenda Item 14, which is the assessor's item, to before Item 4A, since the assessor's on the call right now.
Okay. Anyone else have any more that they would like to get on? Scott?
All set.
Adrian, you good?
Yep, thank you.
All set.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that, you know, we add 9P cemetery account, 9Q hunting on town property, 9R acquisition of a clock property, and we will make a motion to also move the assessor to 4A.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'm just texting Jeff to make sure he doesn't want anything on the agenda.
Who's that? That Jeff?
Yeah.
Has he joined us?
He's gonna join us.
Driving home right now.
Yep.
He went to the Town Hall.
All right. Well, let's get started with the assessor for 4AA, we'll call it. John, I'm hopeful that you can sit there and give us an overview of where we are related to the revale and what steps we're taking based upon COVID. Is he still on the call?
Yeah, I should be.
Man, I could check, see if he's muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thank you for unmuting me. Good evening. As you all know, we signed a contract last December for the new 2021 townwide revaluation project, and that contract included performing full inspections of every property in town. Due to COVID, I think everybody knows that there would be huge resistance, as well as it's probably, you know, not the greatest idea to be asking to go into each and every home. Eric asked me to reach out to the vendor to see what the cost would be if we changed our contract to one in which we send a data mailer rather than go out to visit each property. I did reach out to the vendor. They responded with an email that I believe Eric said everybody should have a copy of tonight. The email they sent back said we could convert the project to a data mailer project. The cost would be the same, and if they had to inspect more than 200 parcels, that we would be charged $30 for each parcel over the 200 properties. Why would we inspect somebody if we were doing data mailers? Because if you send out data mailers and there's no response required by law to then follow up with an inspection of the property. So if you sent out 1,000 data mailers and only 500 people responded, you could still be forced to go and visit the other 500 properties. So at this point, we kind of have a couple of options on how to go forward. 2020 revaluation projects are not completed as of right now, and will be by January of 2021. So those people were already under contract, and they dealt with COVID as well. What did those towns do? The governor signed an executive order that basically relieved them from performing the full inspection, and different towns did different things. Some towns tried to convert or do data mailers for the inspections that they hadn't done, because by the time COVID hit, it really sort of got rampant in like February. If you were doing a 2020, a 2020 revaluation, you would have been close to done with your data collection. In fact, our project is a 2021 revale, and we would have liked to start data collection in like July of this year and banged it out in July and August, but we didn't because of COVID. I talked with the vendor, we sat, and we waited to try and figure out what we were gonna do. I've talked with the Office of Policy and Management several times, including today, to get another update, and I'm being told that they expect the same executive order for 2021 revaluation projects as they had for 2020. While the governor on the 9th extended all existing executive orders, the executive order was only for 2020 towns and not 2021 towns. So we're expecting a new executive order that's just for 2021, and will basically relieve us of that requirement. So what we're left with is, what do we do with the contract? We have a couple of options, and, you know, we need some guidance on how to go forward. At this point, you know, we still could, we could convert to the data mailer process, but I'm not sure that that's the best bet. We also have the option to still send the data collector out to every house and not try to get in. Obviously, we have to do some public relations and inform, you know, the town through press releases, as well as the webpage on what we're doing, but we could still send a data collector up and down every street to every house. They could ring the doorbell, hand them a sheet of paper, tell them who they are, just walk around the outside of the property, confirm the measurements, confirm that the house is still the same, the square footage is the same. They'd be looking for things like central air, decks, pools, finished area over the garage. They see curtains, they could bang on the door again and ask a question about that. So that is one option, where they would do that, and they would not try to get inside the property, but they would go out and visit every single property and confirm everything that's on the card. Or the option B is to, you know, send a data mailer in which we send out to the people a card, and it tells them what we have for data on their property record, and they confirm that it's accurate, or they let us know if something is different and needs to be changed or added and modified. And on those ones that claim there's something different, we have to follow those up with an inspection. So we would have to go out to anybody who didn't respond, or anybody who responded with data that was contrary to what the town had.
Well, tell us there's an option C, please.
What would option C be?
Move it to next year, when there's no COVID issue. And I don't think data mailers are a good solution. Nobody's gonna come out and say, "Yeah, I may have renovated my kitchen and put in 50 grand. We're good." No one's gonna admit that, you know? I mean, we see it all the time. We go and do work on a house, and it's not, it's not been updated. You know, we know it's not, so I just don't see that as a good solution. I don't see the data mail as a good solution, and, you know, a lot of things that people do aren't visual from the outside. So, you know, new bathrooms, new kitchens, you know, those types of upgrades that do add true value, we're not gonna catch. I feel like that's a waste of funds to do a huge contract, meet our statutory requirement, and then not really gain from it. I mean, unless I'm missing something, John. Have you had a different experience with them, or?
Well, no, I mean, I can only offer you the options that are available. There were 35 towns that did revaluation last year. If they had allowed all of those to put it off for one year, and then we got to 2021, and they said, "Oh, let's have them all put it off again. There's another 35 towns." Now you're looking at 101 towns that need to revale in 2022. The cost would go up four times, and you'd have trouble even finding enough vendors to do all the work. I don't think you're gonna see them unbalance the revaluation cycle. When they balanced the cycle, I think it was '94 or '96, they didn't just say 35 towns every year. They actually looked at the number of parcels, because a Waterbury might have, you know, 22,000 parcels, and Andover might have 2,000. So they actually looked at the parcels, and that's how they balanced the cycle, and they didn't let anyone postpone from last year. So I don't think that's an honest option.
Well, but we're doing 21, right? So couldn't we do, we were kind of ahead of the curve. Couldn't we do this in the spring?
Could we come back in the spring with data collection?
No, yeah, go back in the spring and do inspections in the spring.
We certainly could put it off until the spring, but if we get to the spring and then we find out, you know, COVID is still here, I mean, when you look at COVID, in the last 90 days, you went from 8 million cases worldwide to 28 million, and in the US, 2 million to 6.4. I mean, it's still climbing, and there's no, there's, and there's no evidence that it's gonna be any better six or seven months from now. And then what are you gonna, and then what do you do?
Well, I think we're either gonna be dealing with it differently, or, you know, or it's gonna have, you know, run its course. I, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna get, I'm not getting into an argument about COVID here, but my question is, we signed a contract for something that they now can't perform. So I don't see how we can, I don't see how us converting it to a data conversion is the same value, you know?
Okay, so let's go back, John. The option that you sat there and you gave us was, they go out into the field and do full inspections of all the homes by walking around the homes.
Which isn't a full inspection, though.
It isn't a full inspection. I agree. What they would do is, they would actually hang a measuring tape on each home, and they would confirm the measurements, they would confirm the sketch, they would confirm the number of outbuildings. You know, you still can see decks, pools, garages, sheds, central air. If it's a raised ranch and you're walking around, you can see if the basement's finished. I mean, there's still a lot of data that can be collected, and I agree, Adrian, you know, this is, I don't think there's any perfect answer here, and, you know, I mean, if you, you guys are certainly welcome to talk to the vendor, you know, if you want to yourselves, but I can tell you this, out of all the 2020 projects that took place and inspections that didn't get done due to COVID-19, nobody got any money back on those projects. No municipalities, you know, saw any savings because the work wasn't done. It's also not the vendor's fault that COVID-19 came in. But...
So you're also telling us there's no clauses in that contract that have exceptional issues? We'll have to get our county attorney to look at that. So, I mean, I'm more concerned about John's point that if we push this back, that we're going to have our contract increased. That's the biggest issue on my mind. How we do this correctly is the different issue. It's really what we have to look at. So I mean, that's the biggest thing on my mind.
John, I mean, are we really, I mean, part of the reason we talked about doing this was, we were due, because we're within cycle to need a full inspection, right? And we thought that this would also recoup value, that, you know, in general, these types of full inspections are beneficial to the town, because they, you know, collect value that's been lost in the lack of inspections. So if we're not doing them, and we do this other method, what's the reality of what we may or may not collect using this other methodology?
Well, while I can't deny that if you find, you know, improvements that you weren't aware of, it's revenue-producing, what I stated when we talked about this was, my goal is the fair administration of the local property tax, and for everybody to be paying their fair share. So that's the real, that's the real reason that I wanted to do it, and I think that you still will gain great data by going out to every property and seeing them. Plenty of the properties are, you know, some of them are 500 to 1,500 feet off the road, and you know, you get back there and you see what's there, and, you know, there's still a lot of data that gets grabbed. I cannot deny everything you said about the interior of the property, Adrian. It's absolutely true. Kitchen and bathroom renovations are one of the best return on the investment when you, you know, improve a house. But, you know, we're dealing with a worldwide pandemic, and things are different. I mean, we're limited in what we can do.
I think my bigger issue with this conversation, though, is you're saying that they're not gonna do the contract that we asked them to do. They're gonna use a different methodology, but they want the same amount of money. To me, that's a little frustrating, you know?
I hear ya. I mean, you have a copy of the email that came from Patrick Donovan. I mean, you know, you could talk to the town attorney if you want to. I mean, I'm not an attorney.
Well...
What if we, what if we, I mean, I'm going to ask a silly question. What if we postponed our full inspection on this cycle?
We can.
Why not?
Because it's our, we're due.
I know, we're due, but...
But we also have COVID. I mean, if they, I mean, and I think...
So by full inspection, Adrian, we either have to do the data mailer approach, as far as I understand it, by law, we either have to do the data mailer approach, or we have to do the full measure and list, or as close to a full measure and list as the governor's executive order will allow. Those are our two options. It's not like we can say, "Yeah, we're not gonna do it, because we did it 20 years ago."
Well, listen, our last cycle was supposed to be inspections, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, from what the information that I was given, we didn't do, we drove by the houses, like the road, like went by. So my point is, my point is, well, what if we just left the information from the last cycle and set ourselves up to do a, do it in a different, you know, five years from now? What's the difference?
Well, not in five years, but a year, two years, whatever it is.
No, no, what John is saying, we'd be off-cycle. So we as Andover need to stay in our cycle, in our lane. I'm just asking, what if we don't do it at all?
My point is, if we put it off a year, yes, we'd be off-cycle, but given the low number of parcels that we have, and then we just do our next one at four years instead of five years, you know?
Yeah, but you're... Listen...
John, does any of this, is any of this viable? And what's the, what's, what's the penalty if we don't do it the way they want it done, realistically?
Dennis, go ahead.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the penalty is today, because they changed it. Years ago, when they first instituted it, it was a substantial amount of state aid, but I think they have backed off of that. But I mean, you also run the risk of a class action lawsuit from, you know, your residents for not having done what was legally required to do.
So they're gonna sue us for not taxing them more? Probably not.
You could, I've seen it happen before, Adrian. They'll pick any reason they can if a certain group, you know, people or a certain neighborhood, you know, doesn't like the end result. They can, they certainly could. I mean, it is the requirement.
Dennis?
I just wanted to point out that although I'm not really familiar with this, you know, in a hands-on way, I know in Wyndham, my wife, who's a state representative, has had to go to the legislature a few times to get them to approve a postponement. So I think in order to postpone at a certain point, John, don't you have to get legislative approval? You may not for this, but I know it's, it happens.
You do, but let's say that, you know, I'm sure there were towns that wanted to postpone last year, and I'm sure there would be others that would want to postpone this year. Let's say you went for that, and let's say it failed, then you haven't been working on the project, you're behind. Let's say it passes and you get it. You're still gonna have to pay the contractor the 75 grand.
Our contract is, you're telling us that if we chose not to do this with your, with this group that we are contracted with currently to do a full revaluation, and we totally canceled, there's no out clauses?
There's no way that contract will hold up in court.
You know what, guys? This is above my pay grade. I am not the town attorney, and I honestly don't know what the repercussions would be from walking away from the contract and refusing to pay for it. I can promise you that this contractor probably would never bid the town again, and there's only a handful of, you know, decent companies that are that are bidding on contracts these days. Towns are getting between two and four bids. There's only, there's only something like 26 certified revaluation companies in Connecticut, of which a lot of them are an individual person like myself, who doesn't really go out and do townwide revaluations. There's really only a handful of companies that are out there doing this full-time.
So, John, did you just say that you could do this through... through your own company, or how did you, what did you just say?
I said that I'm, I am a certified revaluation company, but I've never done a, a revale or bid on a revale.
Okay. Um, so, John, um, in your position, what, what is, what is your solution for us? I mean, is there a solution for us that's gonna make us happy?
What's your advice?
Yep.
I mean, I still think there would be great value in, you know, going out to every property. But, I mean, the other, the only other option is the data mailer, and we can send out the data mailers. I mean, we'll, we'll follow whatever direction you guys want to do.
So you think going out to every property, and I, I mean, we're gonna pay for it either way, right?
You are, and, and actually, if, if you did data mailers, th- there is, there is a risk that it could even cost more. I don't, I don't believe that would be true. I want to be completely honest. I don't believe that would be true. But if all of a sudden people, uh, A, didn't respond to the data mailer, or, or B, responded with discrepancies, then we're required to go out and look at them anyway, and, and that, and even if that's a smaller amount, that's one here, it's one over there, it's one on this side of town. You know, it's not, it, there's a greater cost than, than being on the street and going to, you know, buy every house.
So you're, so you're saying at this point, we, I mean, we're paying to go door-to-door either way, realistically. I mean, we're paying that same base number. So worst-case scenario, if we go door-to-door, the client, you know, the, the, the resident does not let the assessor in for whatever reason, COVID, whatever. Um, the, the assessor will do their best, just like they were, if they were turned away in any other case, um, to make an assessment based on the cues that they see, and then if they want to fight it, or if there is a discrepancy between what the assessor believes and what the resident believes, then it would go to an appeal situation.
True. And even on a full measure and list pre-COVID, you never got into 100% of the properties. I mean, a good, uh, 10 or 15% will refuse, and then others, you'll just never find them home, and, and after you've, you've tried twice and sent them a letter in the mail, they still don't respond, you still don't get in. So it's not like, you know, y- you would have gotten into 100% of the properties e- even if COVID never popped up.
Sure. Is there, um, and the, so the company is willing to still do the, the measure?
Ab- absolutely. I mean,
I, I, I don't know about anybody else, but to me, that seems like we'll do as much as we can.
Adrian, let me read off what the company replied to me when I asked him that question. The vast majority of 2020 and 2021 Connecticut communities are prog- are proceeding with full measure and list because they see the value in accurate exterior inspection information and physically verifying the property characteristics. Uh, in addition, we found significantly improved interior data response to post-inspection callback letters versus a traditional data mailer. Um, VISION's worked closely with the revale communities, uh, to adopt these measures in a COVID environment and align ourselves with the social distancing, blah, 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 and meet all the state, uh, safety requirements. Um, you know, that's their response, you know, when I ask them directly. I, I, I got the feeling from them that there, it was basically gonna be cost-neutral whether we do data mailers versus we do the exterior inspections at this.
Well, I think John's point, though, that you may pick up a pool, or you may pick up improvements in other ways. I, I think that's, that's probably the better choice.
I mean, it has been, as far as I know, and John, you can back me on this, or tell me I'm off my rocker. It's been 20 years since we've done a full measure and list, correct? It, it, it might actually be longer than that. I, I think I'm almost here 20 years, and it hasn't been done while I've been here. And the, the revale, just before I came, it, it, I was told it wasn't done, and, and prior to that, revales were done every 10 years, so it could have been 30. Now, um, that, that doesn't mean you don't see anything whatsoever. On the 15th of every month, I pull MLS on what's for sale in Andover, and I got a 30-pack, including, you know, of interior photos, and I can see exactly what's there. And if we find work that was done, you know, illegally, you know, you know, we're, we're, or not illegally, or done without permits, or, or it was the kind of work that didn't require a permit but enhanced the value, um, you know, we're aware of it, and we've updated our records in that way. I also go out every single year to every, and visit every property that pulls a permit, and I even go to houses that pull a permit for a new oil tank or, uh, upgrade to 200 amp service, because sometimes they might have done some other stuff that isn't on the permit, and as I drive around the town doing my permits every fall, I'm on just about every street, so it only takes a few extra minutes to look at properties that pull the permit that you would traditionally think doesn't add any value, and
Well, yeah, they, they, they're, they're pulling the permit, the, the 200 amp service because they did a hot tub or a pool or whatever.
And it could be, and sometimes you do find that. You're absolutely right. So it's not like, you know, we haven't looked or seen, you know, any properties in, in, in 30 years, but it has been a very long time since Andor, you know, as part of the revale, sent a data collector down. Now, Jeff McGuire is 100% correct in that, eh, you know, during the last revale, we did drive down every street as part of what's called review, and that will still happen. That happened, that happens afterwards. So the, the, the data collection is the early, uh, phase of the revale. And then later, what, what you do is you, you, you build your algorithm and your canvas system to hit all your sale properties. And when you have something that's hitting all your sale properties, you know, fairly and uniformly, you turn that algorithm loose on every other property in town, print a new card with a new value, and then you drive down every street and you look at them, and you look at them and say, you know, is that colonial worth what a colonial was that sold around the block? So you do go down every street a second time, but you're not walking around the house, you're not confirming measurements.
Okay. So what are you looking at? John, what do you need from us? Do you need a motion that says keep going, or do you just need us to, you just need to hear that we're not, we're not changing our minds?
Uh, you know, I mean, someone needs to tell me, Eric, or someone needs to say, you know, eh, this is a decision that's over my pay grade. I mean, this is something I've never seen before, and, and yeah, eh, we need the town to, or I need the town to say, you know, which direction you'd like us to follow.
What is the latest date that you can deal with doing this?
Um, I got two emails in the last, uh, two weeks, and, and, uh, they were really looking for us to, to make a decision, but I told them, you know, you guys were meeting tonight, and, uh, you know, they're, they're expecting a phone call tomorrow with some direction, because like I said, they would have liked to have been out in the field, um, in the summer months. They, July and August, they could have banged out the whole town.
Jeff, is there some reason you want to put this off? Gi- given, given this board's lack of desire to, to kick things down the road? Is there a reason we're kicking this?
I just want to know the latest date he can start. I really don't, you know, the reason why I even wanted to have this discussion is because we're, we're, we're paying the contracted amount for a totally different service, and there's zero reduction in the price. So my question is, what is really occurring? So that's all I'm after, and if, if John tells me he needs a definitive drop-dead date of two weeks, I mean, I'd like to have the town attorney review the contract. I'd like to understand if we did nothing, what would happen?
Well, I mean, we know we're gonna get penalized if we do nothing in some way, shape, or form. Um, we know that we need
How do you know that? Who's told you that?
That was part of the discussion, that they, they held state aid in the past, unless they do something.
I don't know that for definitive. I, especially with COVID now, I'd like to know.
We're doing an evaluation one way or the other, and if we back out of the contract, I, I don't know. I, personally, at this point, I think they just go forward and do the best job they can with the, with the measuring and, and hope that, you know, people are, are more honest and, you know, step forward, and if not, then we deal with that when the time comes, but, you know?
If you're stuck with the contract the way it reads, and everybody got COVID.
Yeah, I would believe that, I think the problem for us is trying to back out of the contract is, is if, if, what John is saying is correct, is that other towns move forward, then we don't have, we don't have a standard to look at and say, well, other towns didn't do this because of. If other towns went forward with the measure, then we don't really have justification for not moving forward with the measure. That'll be the, or that, that's the only issue we'd run into.
I, I don't know of anyone that postponed from last year and didn't implement their revale and, and keep going. They all did different things on, on how they finalized it, but, and I also was told that no one got any, you know, reduction a- and, and, and their costs.
Okay, so, John, i- if I understand this correctly, um, what is the, what would be the difference from what you're planning to do now with the walkarounds than what you, uh, were contracted and had contracted to do the last time we had the revale?
The last time we, we did revale, we did not go up and down every street, bang on every door, and ask to come inside.
So here's, here's my thought. I'm just thinking out loud here. We have, we have a high population of elderly people in town, and we're asking them to open their door.
We're, we're asking Paula, but they, they have the option, as they always do, to say no. They could say, I'd rather you not come in, and John will have to do the walk-around, and, but it'll still count as our full revale, so we stay on cycle.
Actually, I think you could even, through, you know, public awareness, make it known that we're required to bang on the door and ask. They can say no, and that, and just allow the person to walk around, and I think, you know, if you put that out there, um, I think that's what, that's the option everyone would choose.
Yeah, if, if they know to say that. I mean, we're, we're telling people not to come in the town hall, and then we're now sending people out to other people's houses. I'm, I'm just thinking out loud here, you know?
Sure, maybe I, maybe I grazed over it. Um, I said the person would go out, knock on the door, hand them a sheet of paper, back up six feet, wait for them to read it, explain why they were there, and explain their option.
So, so whenever we, whenever we communicate, i- if we go this route, I think we need to really tell the residents that's what's, you know, that's how it's gonna happen, because I think people are gonna be really leery about letting a stranger in the house, especially, you know, an older, older person that might be living alone. They don't, they don't know who this is knocking on their door, and then, you know, they're, they're leery about sending somebody in the house that, you know,
Sure. Eh, eh, in fact, the last executive order didn't relieve the town's burden to go inside the property, but it, the mi- but the minute the, the, uh, taxpayer says no, then you're relieved of the burden. What the executive order said was you could convert to a data mailer, you know, mid-contract a- a- and, and change to do that. In my discussions with OPM, I have asked them to, to change the definition of, you know, fully inspect, which included going in, to just go in, for, for this particular revale cycle, to just going out a- and measuring and looking at the property from the outside. I wish we could have had that executive order already. I wish I could have, you know, more data for you, and certainly, if you want, we can, I'm being told it could be 30 to 60 days before we get that executive order on, on our revale. And you, and Jeff was asking, how long can we wait? I honestly don't know, because I, I know that they're pushing me hard, because I think other towns are doing the same thing. I think other towns are trying to figure out, what are we gonna do? You know, what's this executive order gonna look like? But the revale company can only get so stacked up, you know, on their work before they're all of a sudden pressed, you know, to keep up with all the jobs.
And then we end up risking that they don't have time to complete the project the way we need to complete it.
Sure, and, and my
We have a, we have some questions that maybe we need to get some answers to before we decide to move forward. I mean,
Well, what would your questions be?
Well, we, we've been going back and forth about can we put it off, can't we put it off? I mean,
Well, we have to do it one way or the other, and we're gonna pay the same amount or way or the other, so. Right. Not really whether we're putting it off. It would be changing the type. Listen, I would love to put it off, but we're being, it would be changing the type of inspection, but that secondary inspection that we're talking about is simply mailing something out to people and saying, please, tell us what you've done in the last 20 years, basically. So.
Yeah, and there's, there's no idea. I, I recognize there's ideals. It's way, so.
So i- it's, yeah, I, I, I mean, there is no ideal situation. They're gonna give the resident an option. They're gonna do it in a polite, COVID-safe way as much as possible, and, and, you know, what more can we ask for at this point, I guess?
And in the meantime, I'm, I'm still working on having that definition changed to the point where, you know, we don't even have to ask to go in and it counts as a full inspection, because, you know, As, as a point of reference, too, I, that was another question I had for VISION. And what he wrote me was, with the current COVID executive order in Connecticut, VISION is not attempting interior inspections at this time. We are still performing all exterior data collection, um, and ensuring accurate measurements.
So, so if, if, if we make an order, John, that sits there and says there's no interior inspections, and all you're gonna do is the exterior inspection, we are allowing VISION to come in whenever VISION wants to, 20, you know, 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, without having to communicate to the homeowner. Um, there's no price reduction for that? They're supposed to do full interior inspections on everything.
Um, you know, as far as the contract goes, I mean, maybe that's better posed, you know, to Dennis. I, I honestly don't know about that, but I will tell you this. They're telling me that, you know, their, their costs are, are, are rising due to COVID. Um, there, there are longer conversations with taxpayers at the door, there, there, you know, um, it, it's a slower process. I, I mean, I, I hear both sides of it, so I, you know, it's tough for me to say, but when you talk about contract law and what we can do, that's really above my pay grade.
Okay, uh, then, one thing I would just ask you, John, to do for us, and then we're gonna have to move on and ha- have a special meeting related to this, I would imagine, within the next, you know, week. John, is there, is there a solution? Is there a way for us to send a, a mailer out to the residents of this community and say, hey, listen, this is how we're going to do our revale. This is what's going to occur. We're only gonna do walkarounds your, on your property, and they're gonna occur from this day to this day. Um, will that suffice for the knock on the door and telling people?
Well, John, John is saying that they haven't officially done it, but Eric is saying he's got a letter saying that VISION's not, not, not doing that, so.
No, but John is saying they have to stop at the door, knock on the door, hand them a flyer, tell them this is what we're doing. Why can't we send that out in advance? Tell everybody this is what's gonna happen, and then VISION can move around the town as efficiently as they possibly can and get this done.
Well, I can't, I mean, can we, that would probably fall on the town to send a postcard out, if that's
Well, I understand that, but what I'm asking is, that's still a valid, um, uh, notice to the, to the resident?
Well, they're gonna have to do both.
Why?
Oh, because when the person shows up on the property, they still knew to identify themselves. I don't care if I got something in the mail or not. If somebody walks up my driveway, I'm gonna want to know who it is.
Okay.
I mean, I know you don't, but you live close to the road.
No, I, I, no, Adrian, I understand your issue. I get it. I'm just, I'm just sitting there saying, this is inefficient, and it's gonna cost us money that, you know, they're not doing the services that we're contracted for, so we're, we're, we're changing the contract, we're changing the service level. So I'm asking, what can we do to change the service level to make it more efficient for VISION and get this done quickly and effectively? That's it.
Welcome to 2020. I have tenants that don't have to pay rent because the governor says so, so, you know?
All right. Can there be scheduled appointments?
Eh, eh, no, they're, they don't, they don't schedule appointments, because when you, you put them on one street, you want them to go up and down, you know, the, the whole street. They can't be popping left and right and then over the
Well, and the mailer, can there be scheduled time between, uh, 8:00 and 12:00, the, Wales Road is gonna be done?
No, typically what we do, typically what we do, Scott, is we try to run, you know, uh, uh, as much of a PR campaign as we can, like the river east coast to every house in town, and we usually will, um, you know, call up the reporter and we'll have sort of a kickoff a story about revale and talk about, you know, when it's beginning and so forth. We go to the town webpage. Eh, we also have that email blast that goes out to, you know, most of the residents. I'm sure we could get on that as well. Um, we also have the, the town web, website where we can, you know, put what's out there and say, you know, Andover is a small town, so the data collection literally could take place probably in four weeks, I would, I would estimate. Um, so I mean, yeah, we could advertise that it's taking place over the next four weeks. They drive around in a car that says, you know, eh, 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 assessor's office, you know, right on it. They have photo IDs, everybody's, you know, the, the idea is to get everybody educated on it and aware of it, so they know what's coming. But we do have to figure out, you know, uh, what scope of, uh, uh, that we wanna, you know, proceed with. And I know there's no great answers here, and I, I apologize for that, but this has changed everything.
I mean, my personal opinion is, if we're paying for it, I want as much as I can get, you know? And, and it says four weeks, so it's like parcel to day, give or take, you know?
It's not, it's, listen, I want what is contracted It's not, it's, listen, I want what is contracted for or revise the contract. It's the same thing that we were dealing with in the last time we did this, is that we had an ex- a contract and expectations that were put out there that I don't believe were fulfilled. So I'm sitting there and asking it very simply, if we have a contract and we have certain items that are on that contract, revise the contract. State it clearly, tell all the residents this is what we're doing and get it done with. I I don't have a problem. Like, John needs an answer, so we're going to have to give him an answer relatively soon. But Dennis, I'm asking you to review the contract and get back to Eric in the next day or two. So that we can sit there and understand what's up.
Dennis, the governor's. John as well, okay? I I'd like to do that and, uh, you know, you guys are not paying me by the hour, so why not?
All right.
What's your timeframe?
Can we let John go?
What what's, well, wait a minute. What's the timeframe to get back to us, Dennis?
I have it here. I I mean, I I approved it when it first went out. Okay. Contract, but I don't know that it covers, you know, I don't know what, you know, what it covers in terms of this kind of situation.
I don't think anything covers the this in the, I mean, you know.
Principles of contract law that can be brought into a contract, too, even if it's not stated in the contract. It all depends on the, on the, on the circumstances.
But here's, but if we ask to change the contract, they may have the option of backing out. And what John is saying is their costs are going up, not down. So. If we, if they say, okay, fine, we're not going to do it, we have to go find somebody else, and they were the lowest bidder.
Let's.
By far.
I'm just going to tell you what, I'm just going to tell you what I find, and I'm not going to make the call for you.
Yeah, it's Dennis, Dennis evaluated the contract. What what I would ask John to do on, you know, and in his position. Is that if we change the way that this is structured. Then let's just get an answer. I mean, because we're not really changed. John is changing the way that it's structured to. You know, a knock on the door and walk around to everybody and ju- just not going in. I'm asking to change the structure. Let's find a way, be creative, so that we can reduce our costs. That that's what I'm after.
I don't know that you're going to reduce costs because they're they're spending money on COVID. But no, no, I mean, just think about it reasonably for a minute. They're spending money on COVID, et cetera, et cetera. But beyond all of that. It's it's less time to walk through a house and note changes than it is to do follow-up data collection. Put together a mailer, send it out, wait for it to come back, and then then put it into the system. Because that's what he was talking about, you know?
Then let's change the structure. I mean, did sit there and do a walk around. If you're going to have to go through every house, do one walk around, sit there and evaluate what's up. Let's move on. I mean, it's, it's.
I don't understand.
John, unless I'm incorrect, unless I don't understand what what you're doing, you're evaluating the town's overall sales and you're doing a a a blanket appraisal. You're doing a, you know. That's all, that's what you're doing, right?
No, he's doing a full measure, a full measure on every house, and then. We're just not going to do a walk through the house. But they will do follow-up data collection with houses that they have questions about. They'll follow up with a mailer and on those particular houses and then do adjustments.
Still doing a a a global revaluation and it's based upon current market or market values at a certain point in time.
Yes, but a full remeasure. That's the key here.
Okay.
John?
I I I agree with what Adrian said. I mean, it, you know, Jeff, we could not look at any single property in town and only look at the sale properties. We could build our algorithm, we could turn it loose on everyone in town. We're turning it loose on old data. So what Adrian's saying is correct. If we do go out, we walk around and we measure, you're going to find people who turned a covered porch into finished living area. I mean, you you just do. He he he's right. You're you're going to find that stuff and you're going to pick it up and you're going to clean up your data. So then, when you turn it loose on everyone. You're you're turning it loose on properties that have gotten bigger or or have, you know, uh, additional amenities.
Okay. My my thought still is that, okay, if that's the case and we're paring down what we're doing, we are still paring down, regardless of what anybody is sitting there thinking. We're paring down. Let's pare down and make this as efficient for that for Vision as we possibly can. When I, you're you're, what we are sitting there saying, Adrian, is we're just going to change the scope and pay them exactly the same amount of money.
There, I I I understand what John is saying better before. I think the part that I was missing, and maybe it's the part that you're still missing now. Is that they are still going to measure every house.
Yeah.
The only difference is we're not, they're not walking through every house, but they are going to follow up with, it could be a hundred properties, it could be a hundred fifty properties. Where they're going to do follow-up data collection because they have a concern that it doesn't match the card. Is that correct, John?
I I would agree with that.
Okay, well, what does the rest of the board members want to be?
Rory, you've been quiet. Paula piped up. Scott, you had some questions. Are you awake over there? Help us out. You're usually the middle ground. Help us out.
I'm just. I think we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I think that the governor said that there's contracts out there that have to be upheld. Jeff?
Um, yeah, we're going to have to do it. Um, and just, um, from my personal experience, I did have John come in my house when I did my basement over. And with my whole, with my whole basement, we walked through the whole house and my about my evaluation went down, actually, because there was a lot of mistakes on the line card. So they're they're not really the boogeyman. They can actually help you out in some circumstances. That's my personal experience.
I I would, I would just, you know, if if you're telling us we need to make a motion, I I would make a motion that we just move forward the contract as suggested by John with a full exterior. Measure and and accommodations that we can make beyond that.
I don't think you're going to do any better than that.
No, and if Jeff, if it makes you happy, we can send out a postcard on top of the River East and on top of the. The different Facebook pages, then on top of the email blast and everything else. Is that what you want?
About all the, uh, people into town to fill out the mailers.
Well, you're not sending them a mailer. That's not what was being.
Well, they're going to.
No, they're not.
No, the mailer was the other option. The the way the. Every ten years, you have to do a full inspection. Your two options for full inspection, as I understand, are sending a data mailer. Which says, uh, we're not really coming to your house, just tell us what you did. Or. You know, a full measure and list. The problem is you can't do the interior part of a full measure and list today. You can only do the exterior part.
Yep. So let's do that and get as much data on the thing as we can and. We have to stay on cycle, apparently, so let's do it.
We seconding that.
What's the reason that we can't have mailers, Eric?
Got to cost you the same money, but you're not going to measure the properties. You're going to be self-reporting.
Scott, you could do the data mailer, but if you do, you're scratching the visit every property, confirm the measurements, walk around. It's either option A or it's option B. And we did, we, that would require a new contract, and we did go back to them, and they actually came back and said that. Um, it said the cost would be the same as the the, it actually, you should have got a copy of it. The data mailer option is the same cost. As the scope currently under the agreement. Um, we incur increased third-party costs with. Uh, cr- printing and creating the data mailer, uh, mailing postage, uh, receiving the data mailers, data entry on those. And then, um, they have to go out and inspect anybody who either A, didn't return their data mailer, or B, had a discrepancy. So they were willing to keep the price the same and say that they would inspect, um, two hundred properties. And if they're running more than two hundred, we would have to pay them thirty dollars per property. Kind of option A or option B.
So if we move forward with this, John, can you rewrite or at least do an addendum to the current contract and list out the expectations for this company?
And, uh, wha- what expectations were those?
What you're going to change for for their needs, what they're going to do. I'd like to know exactly what. The town can expect to receive for the money that it's going to spend related to this changed contract.
Yeah, sure. I think we could go back to them and say, you know, we have this contract due to COVID nineteen. We know you're not going into every door. But can you put in writing what what services you're providing, what services you're still providing, something like that? Make them put something in writing?
In detail, yeah.
Okay.
And then we can, we can hold them to that as far as the contract is concerned. Is that what we're looking for, Jeff?
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Fine. Do you need a motion?
You made a motion. Let's go.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Anybody else, any of the other members want to comment on this topic? Okay, let's vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, let's move on.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, um. We're going to go to four A, the Board of Selectmen, World of Education, Combined Finance Department Committee. Town Accounting Software and the Assistant Finance Office job posting. Who wants to take the lead on this, Adrian? Go to it.
Uh, Confined Finance Department, we are, we need to have a. With the school, we're kind of waiting for the school to get settled in with opening and superintendent and that. Um, otherwise, I think we're in pretty good shape there. Um. Accounting software, my last email or our last email, as you know, uh, we're waiting for a final contract from Edmonds. We haven't seen anything on that yet, Eric, have we? We talked about this a week ago.
We don't have a final contract. What they asked is that we, we sign the sales order, and then once we sign the sales order, they'll produce a final contract.
Okay.
What Edmonds, and that's, as far as I understand, the Board of Selectmen has voted to select Edmonds. And they've also voted and appointed two representatives to a combined group. For the hiring of the Assistant Finance Director.
Okay.
In the Board of Education.
Board of Education, sorry.
Okay, so do we need to, I I thought we had already, we were kind of good with the committee. They're saying we need a motion to accept the same?
Yeah, I I think because the the board, originally, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance had a joint meeting. And they kicked it back to the Combined Commission and said, come back to us. Since we haven't had a combined meeting, the Board of Finance has already agreed to it. If the Board of Selectmen agrees to it, then I'll sign it and we'll keep moving on. That's my philosophy on it.
Okay. Um. I would make a motion then that the Board of Selectmen accept. Um, the last offer from Edmonds with the modified dates of, uh. Implementation and, um, move forward with that contract.
You could probably add, Adrian, how much the contract is for? Thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. That's going to be split evenly between the town and AES.
Yes.
All one pot of money. Let's go.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Since I I need to discuss this, um, and I'll ask some questions, uh. Adrian, what was the auditor's position on this?
The auditor's position is it would be better off to, for the both to be on the same software. Um, the agreement was that, you know, there was definitely some back and forth, but, you know, Edmonds is certainly a doable software. It may be. Slightly more expensive in the long run than QuickBooks. Um, but, uh, given this, some of the things the school is looking for, it might be the best solution overall. Not necessarily the town solution, and I know something that you personally disagree with, but. Um, compromises are sometimes the way things have to be done, so.
It's a. Absolute waste of money for this community. So.
But the alternative.
That is about as compromising as I will be. It's it's going to.
I agree with the.
Adrian, I'm I'm commenting. Adrian, I'm commenting. So I would sit there and I would tell you as a group that we are going to overspend. For a software that this community does not need. And we are going to impact. The quality and the the type of person that we can get in any given position for this community for five years. So that's it. That's all. I mean, Adrian definitely knows my position on this. I am sorry, it's a waste of money. We are totally going overboard and, uh, we could, we could make ourselves extremely more efficient, but. We're going to bend and and, uh, agree to allow the.
Democracy is messy, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, when you have, you have the the wrong people sitting there making the decisions to sit there and do certain things, it definitely is messy. So. Let's go.
Were you involved with that meeting, Jeff, at all?
Yes, I voted no. Go ahead. I mean, I listen, it it is a situation where I would just look at all of you. I wouldn't mess with Jeff Murray if he came to me with an electrical issue. I would, I would rely on him. I would sit there and go to Adrian for a construction issue. I would rely on him. I would look at Paula, and you said something about a website, we rely on you. Scott, you come to anything about forestry and trees, I'm not going to sit there and, but it's all right. I'm only a CPA. It's all fine. Let's go. Let's move on to our next such issue. Vote on this, please.
Does anyone else have any questions about? It, basically, it was a split vote. Candidly, I changed my vote and ended up siding with the school because, to me, the alternative was we would end up with two separate softwares. I I don't believe that. I I understand the school's concerns and what they were specifically looking for, and although I disagree that they were lead needed on that level. The alternative to me was going to be that the school board went in one direction and the town went another, and then we would spend just as much money. In fact, more because they'd be on one and we'd be on a different one, so. And the base cost was going to be the same, so.
All right, any further discussions?
I don't like that we're going against you, Jeff. I I don't, I don't like that at all.
Scott, it's okay.
How do you think I feel?
I am just voicing my opinion. I.
I don't feel, I don't feel right about it, really, at all.
I'm letting everybody here know that this is a waste of money. It's all right. Only, I'm only, I'm only a dumb.
Eric, how did you vote?
Money. So, let's go. Anybody else? Paula, Jeff, you good? All right, let's vote on this. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm kind of opposed to it, really.
Well, you're, what's your, what's, so what's your solution if you're opposed?
Well, you know, I I don't, I don't, you know, Jeff is a CPA.
No, no, listen, listen, there are issues. I I I'll tell you. We we're going to have to vote again. I'm telling you, I hate to waste money. Right? But. Adrian has his his logic in what he's doing, and I don't sit there and discount him. I just have to make my my point made. You guys can all, listen. The Board of Education wants it because the Board of Education's administrative finance person wants it.
But that's not being fair, Jeff. Eric Anderson also voted for it. The treasurer also voted for it.
No, the treasurer did not vote for it.
She did.
No, she didn't.
She did.
She wasn't on the committee.
She, uh, she, actually, she voted, and then when there was a pushback, she said, okay, I'm going to abstain, is what ended up.
Eric, was she on the committee? I thought the five members of the committee were Eric Anderson, um, Laura Edwards. Adrian.
Mark Brinker.
Mark Brinker and me.
Right. And originally, but Laura was, um, not Laura, um, Barbara was also on the committee. But Barbara said, when asked to vote the second time around, said, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I'm not going to be here to deal with.
Eric, was she on the committee?
She was originally on the committee, yes.
Adrian, I'll give you that one. You win. So she she abstained, and that's how we got to two to two.
She basically didn't want to take a bunch of flack for a decision that wasn't going to affect her because she was going to be gone anyway.
Right. And that's where you ended up. And Mark said he didn't feel comfortable voting on it because he wasn't interacting with the software enough in town hall to know.
No, but Mark eventually.
So it was me and you on one side and Eric and Laura on the other, and I switched my vote, and that's how you ended up where you are now.
All right, let me ask this question. If if. We vote now and we say no.
Yep.
What happens? Then you guys, it goes back to the committee and then what?
Then we're going to waste even more money.
And it'll be a push. Look, it's ten thousand dollars over five years difference. And it'll be a push. Look, it's ten thousand dollars over five years difference in cost.
No.
Yes, it is. You could sit and break it down. Ten thousand over five years. I know that you think, I know you think, we have to go by what we were quoted, not by what we think's gonna happen, but what we were quoted. It comes down to about ten thousand over five, five years. There is no guarantees on either side, although Edmonds did lock us in for the first three. So we're locked in on cost, at least to some extent. We did verify that Edmonds has local training available. Like, they have people out of Jersey that will come up if we need in-person. It's not too much of a shot for them to do that. You know, we tried to trim up all the things that we had concerns about with Edmonds. And they were pretty good about getting back to us as far as implementation dates and a lot of the things we were concerned about doing or not doing. I'm, listen, if you ask me if it's my ideal situation, it is not. But the flip side is, if we say no, if you vote no, what's gonna end up happening is the school's gonna be on one software, and the town is gonna be on a different one. And that is a bigger problem. Everyone has agreed that both being on the same software is important, both from the, from the combined finance perspective, but also just from auditing perspective. So it makes sense. And, and if we're talking, you know, ten grand, or even if it's fifteen thousand dollars over five years, it's a three thousand dollar a year difference. To me, the gaining of continuity and the ease of being able to combine those offices because of that is worth more to me than the three thousand dollar difference in cost. Jeff's argument, Jeff's concern is very simply that we can get better availability of staffing, because everybody knows QuickBooks. Everybody. If you don't, it's fairly easy to learn. However, point taken. As Laura had pointed out, most people coming into a job may have to learn the software they're going into anyways. When you go to a new company, they may not have the same software you had at your old company. And somebody at that skill level should be capable of learning a new software in a relatively quick amount of time. Is it a perfect solution? No. Is it an equitable solution for the options we were given? Yes.
I will disagree with you on one issue. It's not three thousand dollars a year.
How much is it?
I mean, because you're sitting there looking at, Eric, what, what is the annual cost for Edmonds?
I think it's around forty, five hundred a year.
Okay. All right, Adrian, I'll give you a second one. That's probably right. About three grand. Now, I'm just gonna tell all the other members, while I totally disagree with this, we will spend more money if we don't move forward. So.
That's what I'm thinking. And this whole project was gonna stop.
Yeah.
If we don't move forward.
We have to listen. I'll even vote to approve this. I do not want to. It's a waste. It's a waste. The community, the community could be much better off if we all got together, but we didn't all get together. So. But if you, if we, if we vote no.
Jeff, I know you wanna vote no.
We're gonna spend more money. I will tell you, if we vote no, we'll get a lot better information. Because I still, we've been, we've been on this board, all of us have been on this board for a year and a half. We've gotten terrible information.
Well.
Telling you.
But Jeff, don't you, don't you feel that when we move forward, we should all be on the same software and, and be, you know, in the same boat together? I, I know, I understand why you wanna vote no, but.
All right, let's vote again, because.
Jeff, when, when we get into this new software, you, will you be able to access it?
No, I, no. I, 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 I should be able to ask that. I wanna see a check register and get it tomorrow, like, in six, seven in the morning, when someone walks in. I don't get that stuff. I can't get that stuff right now. You cannot get it out of our current software, so we have to go to a new software. I can tell you that if Eric had at his disposal a software that was incredibly simple to use, no problem. He, he'd get it. He'd get it to us. We'd have no problem. We're just not going to the most efficient system. That, that's my fear.
It's a very good system. It's just, it's, it's geared to municipalities rather than QuickBooks, which is kind of all encompassing.
Okay. So, so we have to vote on this. If we vote no, I'm just telling you, if we, if we do vote no, we're gonna spend more money. And, and Adrian will not get what, the reason why he switched his vote, which is consistency, which I applaud. I get it. I'm with him. But he did. He waffled. And.
I did.
He did. He, he waffled. He walked away from what he knows is truly, deep down in his heart, the correct thing to do, but I'm okay.
For the team, right?
One other person to deal with this.
All right, let's vote.
Are we all gonna vote again?
Let's vote. Let's vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad we talked that out, though.
Yeah.
It was painful, let me tell you.
Yeah, it is painful.
You can imagine how.
Your job posting. Eric, where do we stand related to this?
So we've got a bunch of applicants. The Board of, of Education has identified the two representatives they want as committee. What we talked about initially when we had the Combined Committee was having a total of five. Two on the town side, two on the school side, and one neutral outside person. So my suggestion would be, I'd be one of the two on the town side. You pick a Board of Selectmen member, or, you know, somebody from the Board of Finance, if you choose. And we go for an outsider, and we start interviewing, and we make this happen. That's my suggestion.
Who wants to be on this committee from the Board of Selectmen? Anyone? Then we should ask Mark Brinker. It's either Adrian or Mark Brinker. Adrian, you got too much going on?
When, when will we be starting? How quick, Eric?
Two weeks.
And what, what are you projecting as to when you think meetings are gonna happen?
Um, I, I think that's up to everybody, you know? I mean, the meetings will be whenever people can make it. I don't, you know, we'll have to do a quick doodle poll and find out when people are available.
I can try to make it work. And if we're looking for an alternative, I, I would actually suggest Diane Shaw Cat. Her schedule's a little more open than Mark Brinker's is right now. And she certainly has the background, having been in banking as long as she was, as a VP, so. You know.
So when can we get an answer from her?
Why don't we, I'll, Eric, you're, you're thinking you're gonna be the other person who's gonna be the neutral?
So I would actually like to go for Columbia's Finance Director, because she runs a Combined Department.
Did you talk to her?
I talked to her quite a while ago, but I haven't talked to her certainly in the last, like, three months. So I would have to revisit this, but I just wanna make sure we understand who the actual panel is before I do that.
I would say I'll put my name in the hat and do it, and if I can't, then I would ask the, the Board of Selectmen to allow me to replace myself with Diane. Would that be acceptable?
I have no problem with that. Anybody else have a problem with that? Okay, so we'll make a motion to appoint Adrian, Eric Anderson, and Eric, since we don't have a neutral third party, when are we gonna find out about that?
Well, I mean, I will find us a Finance Director to be on the interview panel. Worst-case scenario, Columbia doesn't, and I ask Commentaries, who I've had similar conversations with also.
All right, can we, can, Dennis, can we do this vote by email or by telephone? Like as a, you know, outside of this? Like, so if on Wednesday of next week, Eric has all the people that wanna be on this board, can we vote then? You gotta mute.
You're muted, Dennis.
My, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. What was the question again?
If we sit there and, and have this by, you know, we don't have the exact names of the members of this hiring committee. Can we vote by phone or by email at some other time next week?
Yeah.
I'm shaking your head, Shannon.
Sure. You have to set it up, though. You have to set it up tonight.
We'd have to have, we'd have to establish a special meeting to have that.
A special meeting of, of, you know, by.
Let's not have a special meeting. Let's make the motion broad enough to accompany, have the replacements be made, made available, so.
Diane Shaw Cat would be the Selectmen's alternate.
Yeah. Eric Anderson is going to find us a town Finance Director to be the alternate party. Or the unaffiliated.
Just delegate it to Eric.
Yep.
Okay. So would the motion be to appoint Adrian Mandeville to the Hiring Committee for the Assistant Finance Officer? And if Adrian is not capable, that would move to Diane Shaw Cat from the Board of Finance, and that we give Eric Anderson the authority to appoint the unaffiliated party from a pool of Finance Directors or Assistant Finance Directors from our area.
Seconded.
And Eric, I, I'm gonna, but it's seconded now in conversation. Eric, just so I know, is that on your list of motions?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Frankly, it's 4A, aye, aye.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we did it a different, little different way, but I'll make sure I look at your motions again in the future. Sorry, I apologize. Discussion on, discussion on this? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, we're moving on to 4B, Conservation Commission, the CTERT reports, number two land parcels, and three mowing recommendations. Who is going to be our Conservation Board Representative?
Well, Mike Alazi's on. I've got two other people that I know that are on there, Carrie and Hank. So if I forget something, they'll say, I'm sure they'll fill in. But I don't know how much you guys know about this, but there's, there's three parcels of land being offered to the town. Two of them are for the North, what the hell is it? Morgan Land Trust out of Summers, Connecticut. And one by Tom Talbot. And they all tie in with land that's already owned by Andover, right behind the Guile and the King property. Uh, the, the, one by Tom Talbot's a little further away, but it crosses some nice streams and stuff like that. It's a beautiful piece of property. Uh, we've had, we've walked this ourselves as a group. And then we walked it with the ERT group from Hartford, and they had all their specialists there to look at everything about that, the wildlife, the, the plants. We, our own Carrie and Hank participated in it as experts. And they, they came out with a, a nice report from this, and which is on the website, I believe. Is that right, Amanda?
Yeah, okay, it's on the website. It's been on there a while. Because this is kept on being postponed for whatever reason. They're offered, and the only thing we'd have to do is do a title search on the three pieces of property, whatever that costs. I don't know.
It's a hundred and twenty-five per property, generally.
Okay, that's not a big expense, because Tom Talbot offered to take care of any transfer stuff, and he'll pay for it himself.
Does, does that include the four acres that's landlocked, or is that still sitting out there?
It's all landlocked.
No, there's four acres that Talbot has that's abuts myself, the one sixty behind me, Roger Barrett's. It's, it's like literally in the middle of somebody else's parcel.
I don't believe that's, that's true. Ours is, the Talbot property is right next to the town property behind the King property.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, and the other two pieces are butted on either side.
That, I'm asking if it includes that four-acre parcel.
I don't believe it does. This is a, it's a, it's like an eight-acre property that Talbot owns.
Okay. Yeah, he also owns a four-acre property that's land, like, really landlocked, so.
I don't think that's, that's part of that.
Okay.
There's only one piece he's, he's donating.
You are right, Adrian. Okay.
Okay, so we need to make a motion on this, because does anyone have any questions for Mike or for any of the other members of the Conservation Commission related to this potential eight, eight point five? Well, it's really closer to sixteen acres of land.
Yeah. Right. No, it's a good deal for the town, a nice piece of property.
So just one thing first. The next step technically is you still have to send this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-four referral.
Right.
By law.
That's part of, that's part of your motion.
Correct.
So you want a motion, Jeff?
Well, what's the, what's the town's plan for this? I mean, are we taking it off tax holes by doing this? Is it currently in, it's not big enough to be in forestry?
No, it's, it's gonna be open space.
Do we know what the taxes are on this?
Yeah, we did on the, the Talbot. It was, oh boy, I gotta look that up. Any of you guys other have that, that around here?
Eric, do you have it anywhere?
I don't, but open space is taxed at about fifteen hundred an acre. So, I mean, the appraised value on Tom's Talbot property is.
Less than ten thousand dollars.
Somewhere, yeah, twelve thousand bucks, something like that.
So, but, but so the, the plan is to put open space, and then what happens with it? Once it's designated open space, what are we, what are we doing with it at that point?
Well, it's landlocked. There's not too much we can do until something happens and opens it up. Because you'd have to cross either the Guile's property or the King property to get to it. Or come in the other way from the, from the transfer station, that big piece of property that was there, and, and it's up for sale right now.
Yeah, it's a hundred and sixty-one, a hundred and sixty-two acres.
That's the way we originally walked in with Tom, and that was a hike and a half, you know?
All right, yep. But it was a nice hike, wasn't it, Mike?
Yeah, it was a beautiful hike. It was a nice day. All the fire bushes. I was bleeding from head to toe on it.
Okay, you wanna hear a motion, Jeff? Are we done?
Uh, I'm waiting to sit there. I know Adrian's looking something up. I don't know if Jeff or Paul have any questions.
Jeff, can I interject one comment?
Sure, go ahead, Meg.
So I was part of the Conservation Commission when this transaction first was brought to the table, and I just wanted to point out, Mr. Talbot didn't have a preference whether or not it went to conservation easement, or if it stayed developable land. He just wanted the town to pursue acquiring the adjacent parcels. That was his only requirement, if I remember correctly. I think the taxes, when we looked at it, it was, it wasn't a lot. It was like one or two hundred dollars a year.
That's what I think I remembered, too. It wasn't much. It was less than two hundred dollars, I believe. I can find that. I've got it someplace in my many, many documents here.
And, and Adrian, that, that, those parcels are adjacent to a town parcel, a sixteen-acre parcel that's in there already.
Yeah.
One parcel's at one end and one parcel's at the other end. So it's just gonna make the town's parcel up there, you know, thirty-two acres or something.
Yeah, I just found it. I just found it on the GAS. I'm looking at it now.
Yep.
But you, if you wanna look at the taxes, you gotta look on Vision. Uh, it'll give me a, it should give me a baseline. Yeah, the assessment was eighty-one hundred.
So what's the worst thing that we do? We send it to Planning and Zoning for, you know, the referral. And they give us the referral. We still have to go to a town meeting related to the acquisition of the property.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Scott, go ahead and read that motion, will you?
All right, let's push this forward. "I motion to refer the donation of land and acquisition of eight point five-four acres of land from the Northern Land Trust, as well as seven point eight-three acres from Thomas Talbot to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight twenty-two, eight twenty-four statutory referral to determine if it is consistent with the POCD. If it receives a positive referral from the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to be set in a public hearing for the acquisition."
Did someone second that? Anybody? Paula?
I did. I'll second.
Uh, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You opposing, Adrian, or you in favor?
Oh, no, I'm in favor.
Okay.
I know Paula's in favor. She gets open space behind her house.
That goes. Okay.
Who puts the eight twenty-four in?
Excuse me?
Who puts the eight twenty-four in?
Eric, that will be a referral. If the Board of Selectmen votes yes, I will write a letter to the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, notifying him that he's gotten an eight twenty-four request.
Okay.
All right, so Eric will be writing the letter, Mike.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yep.
If one of his conditions is acquiring the adjoining parcels, what is the plan? Don't, don't we need to put some sort of, well, the Conservation Commissioner, sorry, referred to planning and zoning. Will planning and zoning put some sort of plan together to follow up on that? Will planning and zoning put some sort of plan together to follow up on that?
You're asking that, too.
To follow up on what?
Well, his condition for doing it is, if I heard correctly, was that he wanted the town to try to acquire adjacent parcels.
Tom Talbot does?
That's, I, I think that's what Megan just said, isn't it?
He dropped some of the original conditions. He just saw the light on this, you know?
Can you, can you just refresh us on that? I just want to make sure I understood you correctly.
Sure. So I, I would defer to whatever, you know, information Mike has, because I haven't been involved in the transaction in a while. But initially, he was trying to force the town's hand in a little bit. There's a Northern Land Trust parcels as well, abutting the property, and the condition of giving the land to the town was that they would also take ownership of those parcels. It sounds like Mike is saying that that's no longer a condition. But I just wanted to point out, it didn't need to be under conservation easement, because I specifically had asked him that, whether that was important to him, and he said, no, it doesn't need to be placed under any type of easement if the town acquires it.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So Eric, you're gonna write that letter. Now, we're on to 4B, three mowing recommendations.
I don't think you actually voted yet, though.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
We all did.
Everyone was in favor.
Five to nothing, and then Adrian followed up with another question. You got it. Okay.
Just keeping you on your toes, Jeff.
Who, me or Eric?
I said Jeff, that that's you.
Me? Okay, great. Let's go. Who's talking about mowing recommendations?
Okay, so Carrie Crompton is on. She'll discuss mowing recommendations. The Conservation Commission has asked the town to consider altering its mowing practices to be more friendly to pollinators, and Carrie can take over from here. Seth, you're not on.
You gotta unmute yourself, Carrie.
I know, I'm trying to do it.
Okay, there you go. I will hear you.
Have to press the right button. Yeah, I just noticed a lot in the past year that we're mowing very tight and very wide on all of our roads and on the rail trail, and, and behind the ball field. And I'm questioning why we need to do that, because as I said in the, in the written material that you have all received, populations of pollinating insects are down worldwide. It's a matter of concern everywhere. And there are many, many agencies in Connecticut that are, that are really trying to restore pollinator habitat. Without pollinators, as you know, we don't have plants, we don't have food, we don't have anything. So it seems prudent to allow native grasses and wildflowers to come up and bloom and provide nectar and pollen for pollinators if they're not in anybody's way. And so I, I have thought about it a little bit and come up with some suggestions for simply reducing the amount of mowing that's done on town-owned properties, especially to allow low-growing flowers, like clovers, which are very, very good for pollinators, to, to bloom, instead of cutting off their heads every time they, they start to bloom. And so these are, these are sort of preliminary suggestions about how, you know, setting the mower deck a little bit higher along the road sides and along the rail trail to allow low-growing wildflowers to bloom. And then not mowing so hard at the very end of the season when all of the, I didn't actually say this in there, I don't think, but a lot, a lot of pollinators overwinter in stalks of tall grasses and goldenrod stalks and so forth. There's no need to cut it all down if it's not in a sightline or in a place that's needed for what they call an amenity lawn, you know, a sports lawn or something like that. So I, I know you can read all of these. I made suggestions for the Town Center, the Chamberlain Pond Park, which could be a little bit more natural, and the Town Roads, and I'm, and, you know, the lawn around the Historical Museum. I think all of these places could be a little greener and more friendly to pollinators.
On some of them, Carrie, you could move the decks up a little bit.
What, what would be the objection to moving the decks up on any, yeah, what, was there anything that, is there any usage issues?
No, in all, in all those places, I would say that you could do that.
Okay.
Definitely moved a deck up. I don't, I don't know if you could go to, you know, four, but, you know, three and a half or four, that's, that's not asking a real lot, you know?
It's not asking a lot. I, I wanted it to be a fairly modest proposal, actually. It wouldn't change the look of things very much. It would just allow for a pollinator pathway through town.
It's not good for a lawn, but it's fine for where you're talking about. That vacant lot opposite Hop River Home, we could mow that, you know, you know, once or twice a summer or something.
You know, I went down with, with Eric back in July, and I noticed that it had been, the opposite Hop River Homes had been mowed to like half an inch. It was just about bare dirt. There was nothing, except these little spikes everywhere, little green spikes, and I didn't know, there was so little plant material there, I couldn't even identify what these little spikes were. Well, now I went down yesterday, and I know what it is. It's little blue stem, which is a native prairie grass, and a very beautiful, it's, it's rather high now in front of the Hop River Homes. And maybe it's an acquired taste, but I find it a very beautiful look. And it, it provides seeds for many species of birds. These native grasses are good for thrushes and for sparrows and cardinals and finches. They all eat the seeds. And if you mow it to within inch of its life, no seeds will be produced. So if the, if the area across the street from Hop River Homes is not needed for any other purpose, I think it could be allowed to be a beautiful prairie for seed production for birds. I, you know, I'm speaking from a conservation point of view.
I think you talked this into it, Carrie. Is anybody gonna object?
To what? To mark to the mower deck, or to, to take Carrie's well-written presentation and sitting there and trying to evaluate it for, you know, future, so what we can and can't do. I mean, part of Eric's issue is that we don't mow, we have one mower, one guy that goes around and mows, and he doesn't get to it very often. And when he's, when he does, Carrie is basically saying that we mow it all the way down, because we don't get back to it again.
Yeah.
I realize that.
Personally, I would love to see the Conservation Commission sit there and evaluate different areas of the town and town property and state property, and tell us what can and can't be done, because I will tell you that one of the things that I talk to Eric every time I see Eric is the walkway and the hill next to the rail trail. I think it looks terrible. I think it looks terrible for the towny, and if you grow it longer, it'll look even worse. So I would ask the Conservation Commission to go through and evaluate different areas and sit there and tell us what can and can't be done. But with the understanding that there's conservation and there's beautification, and they both need to work together. Because if you could do more flowers, I'd be all for it.
I do agree that. And I, and I want to tell you that I'm in conversation these days with three people at this point who are experts in mowing programs around the state. One is Kim Stoner, who's with the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station, and she's advised DOT on many pollinator pathway projects around the state. She's also one of the founding members of the Pollinator Pathway Program in the southwestern part of the state, which now involves 95 towns in southwestern Connecticut and eastern New York. I'm also in touch, oh, and Kim Stoner, I sent, I sent this proposal that I sent to you. I sent it to Kim Stoner and said, what do you think, Kim? And she said, looks good to me. If you need any more advice, please be in touch.
I, I think we're on board, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to tell you that I, I see this as, as just an opening of the conversation. I want to talk with experts. There are two other people on my list who have both said, this is great. If you need advice, please be in touch. And we have really the winter in which to develop a more fine-tuned mowing program. With good advice from experts.
I would, my personal opinion is, is I would run that just by Eric. He seems to be the guy that's gonna be telling them to mow or not mow, so.
Well, I did run it by Eric, and he said to run it by the Board of Selectmen, so here we are.
Eric just likes to, to get people in front of us, but I think.
And happy, happy to do so. Happy to do so.
Carrie, we appreciate you putting in the effort. We do. I, I think we know that if you put in this much effort, you're not gonna steer us wrong, so.
Well, I would like to, I'd like to do well with it and continue talking about it. Really for, really for changes next year, not this year.
We will keep doing that, and we hopefully will add another 16 acres of pollinator pathway to the mowers for the town for perpetuity. So one of the things that Eric will work on is some kind of program for next year, you know, as we get into our budget for next year, too, is to identify how much money we can spend on mowing and what type of mowing we want to do.
I'll donate 100 bucks to wildflowers if you plant them on the hill.
I, I will, I will match you, and I'll actually double that if.
I'm writing this down, Adrian, $100.
Carrie, I am not kidding you.
Carrie, you better hold them off to that.
$500. If you sit there and can do wildflowers on the hill across from the post office.
Right, exactly.
We can do this. We can do this.
I will, I will put up $500 to do that.
All right. I got that in pencil.
I'm in for 100. I don't have lake money, so.
Yeah, yeah. My ass, the assessor just took that from all of them.
We'll, we'll work on a plan, because this is doable. It's doable, and it could be very beautiful.
Excellent.
I think it'd be great.
Thank you very much, Carrie. We appreciate that.
Oh.
Economic Development Commission, they have, I, one, is Sustainable Connecticut, and two, board member for the Tourism District. Elaine, or?
Yep. Sure. Yeah, the EDC would like to spearhead Andover getting involved in Sustainable Connecticut. I had proposed doing this several months ago, and Kathy Pelosi has been looking into what it, what's entailed in getting us registered to work with their planning groups and tap into potential 50-50 grants to achieve some of our goals. They also offer guidance to help towns work on the various steps towards sustainability. Kathy learned that we needed to have a resolution signed by the town authorities to register for the certification program. So we sent you a letter kind of explaining what it's all about. We sent you the resolution that we need the board to sign to go ahead and move forward and get us registered in the program. The board needs to appoint a liaison and a point person to communicate with Sustainable Connecticut Project Management, and Kathy Pelosi on the EDC would like to be that point person. So we're looking for you guys to sign the resolution so we can move forward and register. We're looking for a Board of Selectmen liaison to communicate with about Sustainable Connecticut, and Kathy Pelosi would like to be that point person for the communication with the Sustainable Connecticut Project Management. So that's what we're looking for. If there's any questions, Kathy's willing to field them.
So what, what categories and what actions, do you have any idea what you want to do for this?
Well, I mean, you can see the list. It's quite extensive. They've got the economic, they've got land and natural resource use, they've got arts and cultures, they've got planning and zoning, they've got transportation, they've got infrastructure and operations, they've got public services, housing, and community impacts. And what, it's not just the EDC, obviously. We would be getting all of the other groups involved in it. The Conservation Commission, Andover Farmers Market, you know, we'll, we have to, if we get the go-ahead, go ahead and work on this, we'll go ahead and start communicating out to several other groups, because this entails everything involved in the town.
What's the cost Elaine to the town?
Free.
It's free?
No, it's not free. It's time. It's time and effort.
Well, and it's time that the EDC is willing to spearhead and see what we can do with it.
Okay. And what is Eric's involvement required for this?
We may be asking him a lot of questions.
Might be asking him to sign off on something. That would be his responsibility, and I'm willing to do all the paperwork. I have no problem doing research.
Eric, do you have any questions?
I mean, I've looked at this program multiple times. To me, the cost benefit isn't there. I mean, you know, you're not, there's not enough grant money behind it for it to be worth going after, from my perspective. It's mostly doing common sense things the town should be doing anyway. And I don't really think we need some external organization to ultimately give us a little black to tell us, you know, we're managing the town in a reasonable fashion. That's my personal opinion. Obviously, a lot of towns are participating in it.
I mean, I, when I looked at the list, and that's why I asked, when I looked at the list, I didn't see a ton of things that we could hop onto. And I, and I say that because we are a very small town. We already have narrow roadways, roadways. We have a limited budget. I mean, so many of these things are, they're feel-good ideas, but, but they go, they cost money. We have a hard enough time getting a budget passed now to, to put our kids through school and, and take care of, you know, hazards like trees and things. I can't imagine, you know, if we started going after some of these things. I, it's not that I think it's necessarily a bad idea. I just don't know that it's a good idea for us right now.
So what they're asking for is a representative from the Board of Selectmen, and they are going to sit there and do all the work. And I know it's gonna come back to Eric somewhat, but I'm asking.
So here's the thing, though. We have so many irons in the fire right now with other projects. You're asking for another member of the Board of Selectmen to hop on. There's only five of us.
Understood.
Looking for a liaison.
That's, but the liaison has to go to a committee meeting, and right now, I can tell you on most weeks, and last week was great. I actually got a whole week with no meetings. But generally, you know, it's, we're, we're doing something two nights a week already, you know? I, for myself personally.
I'll, I'll volunteer to be the liaison with this group.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome, Kathy.
Awesome.
I know. Just asking. I mean, listen, I keep saying all along, Adrian, and I know you believe it, too. The more people that get involved in this town, the better off we're gonna be. So when Kathy Compton does our wildflower evaluation, right, and we do those types of things, it's only gonna benefit the community.
And I don't disagree with that at all. I just don't want us to spread ourselves so thin that if Elaine and Kathy are putting in the effort, we need to be putting in the effort, too. And I don't want to be haphazard, be hap, haphazard because we made a motion in a feel-good idea. If we're gonna do it, we need to, you know, you have to commit to being able to do those meetings, or myself, or Scott, or Paula, Jeff. Whoever's doing it has to be able to commit to doing those meetings and commit to putting in the effort, that's all.
I think that it would only be a question of, Jeff, that you would perhaps be at a meeting quarterly. It's not like you're gonna be there every month or every week.
You mean, we could have a phone call?
We can.
All right. I'm in.
And, and who, who will be responsible for picking the different things that you could be working on out of this list?
They'd have to come in front of the Board of Selectmen.
Exactly. And, and can I just say that there's, I, I hate to say I disagree with Adrian, because I very, very seldom do. But, but I just wanted to point out that I thought that there were a lot of information here that I looked into. One, for instance, was land and water body conservation, which I thought that was inland wetlands, I think. And you guys can tell me if I'm wrong. And the farmers market, I think, I want to see that grow. And the environmental, they have, offer environmental programs and education and recycling, energy efficiency. I don't know. It just seemed like, it just seemed like we should find out about it. I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just saying we need to find out about it.
Kathy, again, I'm not, I'm not against it. I just, I had a hard time looking at the list, and because there's different levels of certification, the bronze and the silver. because there's different levels of certification, the bronze and the silver and all that. I had a hard time identifying ones that that would be. I don't want to say cherry picking, but you know, it's something that I know that we could do as a town.
But definitely if we were going to go for a grant, what you're talking about, Adrian.
Yeah.
Of the bronze and silver and all that. That's if we were going to go for a grant. First, we we have to find out about it. We can't jump into it. We've got to work on this.
Yes, willing to work with you and and he's he's dumped on board, so you guys are good to go.
Thank you, Adrian.
Dennis, go ahead.
Yes, Jeff, I can put you and and Kathy and Adrian and anybody else who wants to. Eric in touch with people in Wyndham who can tell you more than you'd ever want to know about obtaining silver status.
Dennis, I'm going to call you.
Okay, you call me and I I will put you in touch with Dawn Niles.
Thank you.
And she is on top of this and we are right near the top of the top of the pack here in terms of.
Thank you. Thank you for your assistance.
Our our town council does nothing, really, except Dawn is a member of the town council.
You also you also elected a Green Party mayor, so it's a completely different environment down in Wyndham. Let's begin.
Hey, hey. I am green.
No, no, Green Party, totally different ballgame.
Tom DeVivo is a Democrat.
Yeah, really.
Okay. So do you can we make a motion on this?
So paid for it.
Let's let's make a motion on this. So. Actually, I don't think this is on here.
What?
But we need an appointment, right? A motion for you guys to sign the resolution.
So we have the resolution. We'll have the resolution to be signed. If you're all in agreement with it.
All right, make a motion that we sign the agreement for sustainable CT and appoint Jeff McGuire as the liaison to work with Kathy Pelosi and EDCs.
I'll second that.
Breathe a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Now, the Central Region Tourism District, I believe they had sent an email to Jeff McGuire looking for somebody to be a representative for Andover to work with the Central Regional Tourism District. And Patrick Doherty from the EDC has volunteered to go ahead and be that representative with the with the Central Regional Tourism District. So I don't know who would go ahead and I don't know, Jeff, you would email them back and tell them who it is, who our representative is, or if you want me to do that, or.
I know. I'm trying to find the email. So.
Yeah.
Amanda sent it to me.
Yeah, yeah.
So all you're trying to do is get somebody appointed to this board for?
Yep, yep, for to represent Andover on the on the Tourism District Board.
Okay. How much tourism do we have in town? We have to develop this, right?
We could send first farms. They have wonderful chocolates.
Well, Patrick would have to go to their meetings and go ahead and figure out what they're looking for from the towns and figure out how the towns can benefit from the tourism district. So he basically is volunteering to go to the meetings and find out exactly what it is it entails.
So motion to appoint Patrick Doherty to the Central Region Tourism District? Um. Question. Given that it's EDC, really, right, that's sending him? Is this really an EDC decision? Does this have to be a Board of Selectmen decision?
Well, the email had come from Jeff.
Okay.
It had been sent to the town asking them, not for the EDC. So the EDC is just saying, we've got somebody. Let's just let them know who this is. So I guess we'll we'll kind of figure out how to how to inform them that Patrick is it and how they get in touch and get information so they can get in touch with Patrick directly. Just get his email to them.
I'm only asking as a point of procedure because he's going from your board, really, as a rep, right? So.
Yeah, yeah.
It really should be your board that does this, not us.
Yeah, and we we have. We already did.
Congratulations, Patrick. Moving on.
Yeah. All right, so we'll just figure out how to inform them.
Well, I'll sit there and say, I don't think that I received, unless I received it under a different email address. I know there was a letter went or Amanda. There was something was sent to you, sent to Eric or sent to to. How did that get to you?
Through Amanda. Just like it got to you through Amanda.
No, that's what I'm saying. So I'm just like, who is it addressed to is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
That stuff usually comes to the first selectman of the mayor typically.
Are you the mayor?
I I am the chief of police, so.
Probably went to you, Jeff. I don't know.
So anyway, I will sit there and I will.
Figure that out.
I will. I will send something to them then.
Okay, good.
If Jeff's the chief of police, does that mean we put lights on his car?
I want them. I want them in a big way.
All right.
All right, can we can we move on? So.
Just finally, one more thing because now that they're, I don't know if people have noticed on Facebook, Hebron has a got, Hebron open is open for business Facebook page and we would like to do an Andover is open for business Facebook page and Amanda has talked to the the group. They have an actual team over there in Hebron that's working on it. And they are willing to open up their meetings to us so we can go ahead and discuss with them how to go about doing this. So we're going to be partnering with Hebron on this to try to give an Andover is open for business Facebook page, too. That's it.
Awesome. Great job.
Thanks.
All right, for D, Website Development Committee.
Paula, you want to take this one?
Yep, so our Website Development Committee, we developed the website. It's launched. Yay. Great job to everybody. So we were, we were kind of thinking that maybe we need to shorten the duration of the committee because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was going to be a year and a half for the committee. So we we got the website out there and anybody that has suggestions has been sending their info into Amanda and or Eric. I know Diane's been great with some suggestions and sending that info in, so I'm just putting that out there that.
Any more that your committee needs to do, Paula? That you guys feel like is left on the table?
I I mean, I personally think the website's out there. It's it's doing great. It's doing its job. And as things pop up, you know, people are commenting or sending information in and we're adding things or or fixing things, so.
When you say we are, though, now we're talking about Amanda and Eric primarily.
Yes, yes.
So should we make a motion to disband the committee and give them a welcome break? Thank you.
I I that's what I'm suggesting, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we disband the Town Website Committee with a grand thank you and an awesome job done.
I'll second that. Thank you very much. Everyone that was involved.
And all of the committee.
Yes, it was. It was a joint effort and they all did a great job. Great input, great team.
Great.
Jeff, call a vote.
Do I have to call a vote?
Yes, we're disbanding a committee.
All right, all those in favor of disbanding the Website Committee?
With it. Congratulations.
Thank you. With our undying love. Thank you.
Well, let's not go that far.
No, it's true. All right, for E, Traffic Safety Committee, Preliminary Assessment Draft Report. It is up on the website. The committee met twice. The committee chairperson put together a tremendous report that everyone should take a look at. Joe did a great job. The talked about it, various different spots within the lake, Eric, the state trooper. Myself and the other four members of the committee all attended all of those two meetings and if you read it, there are certain things that we have to decide what we're going to do. I think it's probably important that we sit there and look at this for the next budget cycle to see if there's any of these things that we want to tackle. Unless Eric thinks that we can tackle some of them now with our current funding. Eric?
I think most of this is future funding. I think we can do the crosswalks that we discussed. There's, we talked about the addition of an additional three-way sign where Island meets Lake Road. I think that is definitely doable if the traffic authority, which is all of you, decide it's appropriate. You know, a lot of the the other solutions are going to take you know, some more effort and money.
Anybody have any questions about the report?
Do we have estimates to go with a lot of these suggestions?
No, I started going down the road, so to speak, with Coast Jensen and Miller's Traffic Engineer. But I think the reality is, you know, any of the intersection changes, we would have to hire a traffic engineer and we would have to come in and we would have to have the the intersections actually redesign and figure out what we can do and exactly where. I think some of the solutions are paint and those are relatively easy to implement. You know, increased signage, things of that nature, we can definitely do without incurring a lot of costs, but when you start talking about reconfiguring a roadway, you know, you're spending some dollars. So, no, I don't have hard estimates for that by any means.
Okay.
Okay, Speed Check Sign, unless anybody has additional questions, Jeff, Paula, anybody? No? Okay, Speed Check Sign.
So that was supposed to be in place already. I'm getting a little annoyed. We've now sent the instrument back to the manufacturer twice. You know, theoretically, we're going to have it back in three or four days and it's going to function. But, you know.
Is this a COVID issue? Are they just behind? What's going on?
No, you know, it was. It was. They, you know, they quoted a unit and then they sent us something. Decided that they had sent us the wrong thing and before we even unpacked it, asked us to send it back. What we originally had was actually the correct unit, which we sent back. And then they changed it to the incorrect configuration and sent it back to us. And when we tried to attach it to the battery, none of the wiring matched what the diagram was, so I called their helpline and they're like, yeah, no, we gave you the AC unit. And I'm like, well, why did they give you that? Oh, I don't know. So we sent it back. We're getting the DC unit again. So kind of stupid. In fact, the president of the company called me after the last screw up and, you know, personally apologized. But, you know, the reality is it's still taking a month and a half longer than it should have to have us a functional unit.
Okay.
But that's where we're at.
All right, any questions? No. Five appointments. Five, A, Gabrielle Anderson, alternate member to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. And B, William Monroe, regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Megan, but William was also agreeing to be an alternate member of or a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Commission also. Am I correct?
So we don't have any vacancies on regular member seats. He did express interest in the commission and we're hoping to speak to him tomorrow night about his interest and.
Got it.
But we're not bringing his name forward to the Board of Selectmen tonight, just just Gabrielle's.
Okay, sorry, that was my error then.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so. Does anybody have any problem? I'll read the motion. Board of Selectmen would like to appoint the following members of the Inland, Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Gabrielle Anderson, alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then five, B, the Board of Selectmen would like to appoint the following member of the Inland, Wetlands and Water Course Commission. William Monroe, regular member.
It's in zoning board of.
It's supposed to be Zoning Board of Appeals. That was my error.
That is my error. I apologize. Let me reread it.
You all three, you guys are fired.
Rewrite that.
Board of Selectmen, or I would like to appoint the following member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, William Monroe, regular member.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, resignations. A, Theresa Gunna, Assistant Town Clerk. Wayne Thorpe, alternate member of Zoning Board of Appeals, and Linda McDonald, Land Use Board Clerk.
If I did look at the the Board of Selectmen packet and and the resignation from Wayne is for inland wetlands, he sent a letter dated August nineteenth to me that was forwarded to the board. So that's a typo on the agenda.
Okay. Well, then you're going to make me read that. So Wayne Thorpe is an alternate member of that?
He is an alternate member, yes.
And that was inland wetlands?
Correct.
Okay, so Wayne Thorpe, alternate member of the Inland, Wetlands and Water Course Commission. So do we have to vote on our resignations? We're just accepting them. We're just announcing that they're being done. Okay. We're going to move on. Town Administrators Report. Eric.
Okay, so this one was kind of more of a novel than a novella, so I'm not going to read the whole thing, obviously. You know, COVID nineteen, the town is doing very well overall, even though within the region, our numbers were up predominantly because of the University of Connecticut. Political science will be covered elsewhere in the agenda now and Dennis is on to pontificate about that. So I won't go into that here. We did realize that after comments from a couple residents that our current zoning regulations as they relate to signs no longer line up with either the federal or the state courts. So that will be changed. We made some temporary changes to what will be enforced on private property. The board has the decision, Board of Selectmen, what they want to do on towns' property. Paula talked about the website stuff. And as far as public works goes, you probably all all aware, there's a lot of tree work going on right now and we're going to talk later in the Treasurer's Report about moving potentially a little bit more money into that to continue doing tree work. We're about to do some guardrail repair in some of the worst areas we have in town. We have a really big backlog of guardrail work to do. We're going to spend about twenty thousand out of Town Aid Road to address some of that now. We have about a hundred and twenty thousand on our list of priority to repair, but we don't have a lot of money.
Quick question on guardrails. Is any of that stuff insurance based?
No, the only damage we have is some relatively minor damage from the storm.
Okay.
So we're not really going to be able to claim much in terms of we have a fund, but there's not a lot of money in it right now because the last time, basically every time somebody gets in a car crash and damages the guardrail, we go after their insurance.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Right, but we've spent most of that. I spent a lot of that last fall doing guardrail repair.
So are we, we're piggybacking on the state bid?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
And Eric, the replacement, are they, are you putting steel or the replacement of wood?
No, we're doing the metal guardrails. Because, I mean, the wood ones just don't seem to hold up all that long. I mean, you know. So we all know we didn't fog seal over the chip sealed roads. Comer is supposed to be in on the 21st, which is next Monday. It's estimated that that's going to take two days. That should be done without road closures. We'll do one lane at a time so we keep the roads open. Paving operations, we're going to be doing shimming. So shimming is basically when you repave a localized area. We're going to be doing a section of Lake Road. We're going to be doing part of Erdoni. We're going to be doing part of West Street. And we're going to be doing the extreme top of Bunker Hill, the first major hill on Bunker Hill. There's a lot of other spots that need it, but you know, that's what we've got kind of in the budget for right now. So we should, that should start the last week in September. That will be started basically right after they complete the transfer station because it's, it's the same contractor. We're starting mid to the end of October. We're renting a pothole filling machine called the Durra Patcher. And I'm going to send Public Works out for basically. You know, almost a month just filling potholes because we have an enormous backlog of potholes to fill. And it should be a much more permanent patch than what we're typically doing and more cost effective than trying to get hot patch each time. Rail trail got really trashed this last couple of months. There's been a ton of stuff down on the trail and a lot of hangers that are unsafe. We're working with Deep to address that. We'll probably do some of it with our crew and some of it will have to be done by Deep. We are addressing some of the sightline issues that the rail and road interfaces right now as we're doing tree trimming.
Isn't that really Deep's responsibility?
Yep.
So why are we using town stuff people for it?
Because then it'll actually get done.
It'll actually get done then, Adrian.
I know, but given the amount of priorities that we have before winter hits.
We're talking very few trees to increase the sightline drastically.
Well, he was talking about doing hangar work too.
Well, you know, I, I, we're not. I think there is a place to use Public Works in a limited fashion for addressing some of the safety concerns on the trail. I would like to get Deep to do as much as I can. And we have a long stretch of really bad dead trees on the rail trail where there's somewhere around 90 dead ash trees on the trail. We are not addressing that. I mean, they are going to have to come in and do the systematic cutting. But just like we mow the rail trail, we have some responsibility to the trail. Because our town members use it. That's my philosophy anyway.
Has Deep got back to you about a distinctive's offer?
No, they have not. And I, I bugged him a couple of times. There, he's contemplating it. Which is annoying for me.
Have we? Do we have in town, I mean, given all the different little things that we have going on? Do we have a group that's dedicated, like volunteers or townspeople that's dedicated to, to trail work?
So if we were to be honest, most of the trail work that gets done gets done by volunteers.
Yep.
There are some stuff that can't be done. You know, we're not expecting volunteers to drive down the trail with backos. You know, and use chains to pull hangers off other trees, stuff like that. There's some, technically volunteers are not supposed to be cutting using any power tools on, on state property. We all know they do, but the, the point for town crew is to do those things that the volunteers can't. And right now we have some of them that we'd like to address.
I was just curious. Thank you for the clarification.
Yep. Transfer station regrading is supposed to start in somewhere around the 23rd, something like that. Actually not the 23rd, 26th, 27th. That's being done by Haynes. They were the low bid contractor for the job. They've done a bunch of work for the town too, and the quality of their work is pretty good, so that should go pretty well.
We're going to advertise really, really heavily, a really, really big sign down at the transfer station to remind people we may have to close it for a day?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to put stuff out on social media and everything else. The only reason I haven't done it so far is I don't know which freaking week they're starting. But we are probably going to have to close the transfer station for Wednesday. So they have a continual shot at completing the project. Uh, I do have an RFP out right now for grinding all the brush at the transfer station. We haven't gotten anything back in yet from any of the contractors. That closes in another three days.
Have we looked at just renting a tub grinder ourselves?
No.
Wyndham rents a tub grinder instead of having a crew come in, they just rent a tub grinder for two days and have their public works do it?
If you want me to look into that, I'll look into that.
I, I, I don't think that we have anything to load that, a tub grinder with, Adrian.
We got a backhoe, don't we?
I, I know. I think you need something with more substant, more substantial than that, you know?
Well, I, what, do you have any bids in yet on that?
Nope.
Okay. I just, I don't know anybody that, I, I mean, I guess other towns may do it that way, but most towns I thought were renting grinders and doing it themselves. You know?
So I put a thing out on the, uh, the Public Works ListServe that UConn hosts. And I got about 10 or 12 responses back from towns about what contractors they use for the grinding. And we've, there's not that many of them that do it, and we've sent the RFP to all of those.
We sent it direct to those people. Okay.
Yes, we did.
Eric, can you ask, I, I, it may be out of their scope, but maybe Distinctive Tree has a day with their grinder?
I asked, they're not even remotely interested in doing that. That's wrong piece of equipment for the job.
Okay.
Nice thought.
I had hoped.
That, that would get brought up in the meeting.
You need a tub grinder.
Yeah, well, he said we might not even need a tub grinder, but, um. If we, I, I would look into renting a tub grinder and then, given what Scott is saying. Like a, a 20 or a 30,000 pound excavator with a thumb on it.
Yeah, that's what you need.
Okay. All right, keep going, Eric. We're going to figure that one out.
Okay, um, Times Farm Bridge. DOT finally gave the authorization for the closeout of the project. We're just waiting on the final cost accounting from CME. That's turned out to be a little bit of a cluster because the engineer assigned to our project said, hey, I got the final authorization from DOT. By the way, I'm quitting. Today's my last day. So CEO, CME has to get somebody else from their firm authorized to do the closeout. The really annoying thing is that there's a $17,000 discrepancy in, uh, what the final costs are. So as far as any paperwork I have, we owe the final contractor about $22,000. But we should also get some additional money back from the federal government for their match for that. CME says 17,000 of that were previous cost bad estimations and that we actually own, only owe about 5,000. So that's got to get resolved. The state has finally done their part and now they're pushing the company to resolve. So I think it will actually be resolved fairly quickly. We owe somewhere between 5,000 and $22,000, which is a really unsatisfying thing for me to tell you. But because it's the engineering company's job to review and make the determinations on what are allowable costs and not allowable costs. I just don't have that information. That's something that the engineering company has to work out. Obviously, the contractor is really pissed off about the whole thing because this thing was done in 2017 and they still haven't got paid yet for their final. So they're, they're unhappy that they haven't got their hold back. We have the money to do it. You know, the money's sitting there in the account getting ready to pay it. I just got to get the final amount from the engineering company. I really want to close that freaking project out and be done with it. That's it. Veterans Monument. Jerry's right behind me. One of the things I realized as we started on that project is that really we need to put our hands around everything we need to do at the Veterans Monument and then make a decision whether we want to, you know, what we want to actually do. Because we were starting to do this piecemeal, but we really didn't have the cost for everything. So right now I'm trying to get as much information as I can about all the various different things that are going into it. We got to make a decision whether we keep the existing well or re-drill. Or just pound the existing well. Got to make a determination whether we're going to go with sprinkler systems. You know, whether we're going to add more topsoil and redo the electrical. So that's kind of what I got on that. And did we make that agenda item?
Did, do we need to talk about that, Eric, tonight?
I think we should. So I had sent out with the administrator's report a pretty lengthy section of everything I thought we needed to get done with the Veterans Monument. And, you know, Jerry's here with me. And the, the question is, what is it, how does the board want to proceed? What other information do you want to have before we make a decision what we want to do here? Essentially, how do you want to proceed at this point?
Thing is, you know, we got involved with this, me and Eric, and started to test the well. The well's not really great. And you could take a shot at an irrigation system working, but that's what it would be, taking a shot at it. It probably would keep running. But it would probably be better if we put a new well in. Then we're talking about putting topsoil in there, seeding it in an irrigation system and have engineering firm, just like Eric said, put this on a print so we know exactly where everything is, where the well is, where the new electrical is going to be, where Jerry's new monument is going to be. Where everything is located precisely on a print, so that everybody knows in the future where everything is located.
What, what's the issue with the well? Is it volume? Is it reserve depth? What?
Well, the, the well, the, the well will put out 15 gallons a minute for about 20 minutes. And then it slows right down. So it's telling me that it's, it sucked it dry. And it, then it'll start to pick up after two or three minutes. Then we tried it and ran it for, you know, an hour at like three or four gallons. And it ran fine. So, you know, three or four gallons will cut it for an irrigation system, but. And it was at, you know, it hasn't rained in, you know, 10 weeks, so it's a pretty bad time. And so it kept, kept going. So you could probably think that it would work, but you know. Eric is going above and beyond and thinking that we do, we possibly could need a new well. It's an old well and it could be, you know, when we checked, it's only 55 feet deep. So it's an old, an old well that was from the creamery.
So you're talking $20,000 in total expenses if I can, if I read the information correctly. That would be.
Then we, then we would have, you know, when you come around the corner and everything would be green and we would have a nice print and everything would look nice there.
Okay.
Yeah, I suspect. So the only thing I've, I've, uh, you know, committed to town to at this point is the, uh, the survey. And I think the survey is important because when the state gave this to us, they gave it to us with a compilation survey, which is basically saying, eh, we're not really locating anything. This is generally what it looks like. Um, here's the borders.
We already have one of them.
We ought to survey it and that is underway. And then the question is, do we commit the money to do the project? And what does the project include? And what I would say is I still don't have all the information. I was hoping to have a price from Rick by now of what all the electrical work is going to do. And then, you know, the other thing we really need to do is when they drilled the well and they put in the pressure tank for the well, it's in a very narrow housing. To the point where the, you know, when they drained the thing every year, they pretty much had to lower a plumber in upside down, you know, to work on the thing because you're in a pit that's about two and a half feet wide with a pressure tank in it. So we really need to put a vault in at the same time. And I feel like what I want to do is come back to the commission when I have a completed plan with a sketch and all the steps identified before we start outlining, you know, what we're going to do. Now, the hard part is, and, and we got Jerry behind me, is that Ron wants to start sometime this fall putting in the, uh, you know, the stonework for the monument. Now, I don't think, because I think the irrigation system will go around that. And I think because the lighting will meet the existing work. You know, we can go ahead with just that part since Ron is doing that without charging the town anyway. And it's laid out right now in paint. And so we'll have the surveyor, when he does the initial survey, mark it on the, the thing so we know where it is. And that's where I'm at with that.
So how long will it take you to do the analysis for everything else?
I'm hoping I have that to you in a month, but I don't know exactly how long it's going to be before I have an A2 survey in my hand either. Should be, I should have that within a month also.
We're paying for an A2 survey of the park?
Yep.
Why?
Because eventually we're going to want to do as-bills for everything we do. And you're not getting as-bills if you don't have a survey to work from.
Why do we need an as-bill, as-bill for the park if we're only talking, irrigation isn't going to be on that. The only thing you're talking about is the well.
Why wouldn't irrigation be on that?
Irrigation's going to be on it.
On an as-bill?
And, and the electrical is going to be on it? The irrigation is going to be on it?
You're never going to get irrigation on an as-bill. Nobody does that. They, they put a general where the heads are going to go. But when the guy starts putting the stuff in the ground, he's going to use a slit, a slit device and it literally just pushes it into a hole. So whichever way that thing goes, and if he's got a, a nice loop line because he's not going to want to kink it, you're not going to put tees in. They're not going to, you're not going to come back and do an as-bill for that. That's not realistic. And electrical, again, how much electrical do you have down there? It's going to be all low voltage if we're smart about it. It's not going to be, it's not going to be 110. It's going to be low voltage. So you don't need to mark it. Low voltage is not, is, is not dangerous to anybody. So why are we spending that money?
How much is it?
We're, you, you don't want to, you don't want a print of when they put the electrical in there and where it is. Right now, nobody knows anything about that, the electrical.
Only electrical you need to mark is going to the well. That's it. That's not an A2.
How much is the cost of the survey?
So the survey is 2,500 bucks.
That you don't need to spend.
Well, I mean, I certainly disagree with you. I want to know what's town property and I want to ensure that we're doing stuff on town property, not on the state property.
So reach out to the state and get the A2 for six for that section in the intersection.
We already have that.
Huh?
We, we already have that.
So you already know what's town property and what's not? Next question.
Have we already done the survey, Eric?
We haven't. We haven't done the survey. I mean, I have given the guy a purchase order for it. But if you decide we're not going to do a survey, I mean, I'll pay him off for whatever he's done so far and you know, I guess we can draw pretty pictures of it and proceed from there.
But what do you need, again, what do you need an A2 survey for? The electrical should be low voltage. So it doesn't need to be on a, a marker. The, the, the irrigation is gonna be done after the fact and he's never, once it actually grows in, he's not gonna be able to tell you where it is unless he goes around with a ground map. And you're not always gonna do that. And why would you even need to know? You wanna, you know what I mean? It's, it's low, it's not very deep, it's replaceable, it's plastic. I mean, you know where the monuments are, you can see them. What, what are we, what are we marking that we need to know?
Okay, so.
I mean, I wanna know where the electrical is, Adrian.
It's one, it's not gonna be one, it's not gonna be one-ten, it's gonna be low voltage DC, that's what it should be. And nobody marks that because it's low, you do low voltage DC because for, for groundscapes, it's not a hazard to someone. That's why you do it. You don't want one-ten open voltage down there.
Okay, so, so can, Adrian, can you get with Eric and Scott? You have three who have the expertise in this field that I like to rely on appropriate people with the expertise in their given field. I would like you to sit there and, and come to a resolution of what should be important and, and get done and.
Okay, just hold on for a sec. So are you, is the board wanting me to tell the contractor we're no longer doing an A2 survey? Is that what you're telling me?
I, I want you to get with Adrian and Scott and determine if it's an appropriate use of those, that twenty-five hundred. If you guys, I don't mind if you spend it on a survey of that, that land. It's not, but that's not my, I'm relying on Adrian and his expertise. If you wanna, if, if you guys come to it and say that it should be done, then do it. If not, get Adrian to help you draw up the plan.
Does the eight, does the A2 include the?
It's a cartoon, Adrian. There's nothing on it. It's cartoon.
No, does the A2 that you're talking about, does that include the building for the museum and that, that area beyond it?
Nope.
Everything in the triangle.
Nope, then it's a waste of money.
I will call the contractor and I will cancel the PO. And I will pay whatever cost he's acquired up to that if that's your, your decision as a board.
I would say that we need to have a board vote on this before we stop that.
You make a motion then, let's go.
I motion to, uh, hire a contractor to do the surveying work at the Veterans Memorial.
Okay, I'll second it. Further discussion.
There is no need to mark out one, uh, uh, low voltage electrical, which is what you lose in landscaping. There's no need to mark out, because it's nearly impossible to mark out after it's done. I'll send you pictures of irrigation jobs when they're done. If you could tell me where the irrigation is, God bless you.
What about all the wi, the wiring that's going to the poles, Adrian? What about all that wiring?
For what?
Nobody knows where any of that is either.
For what, for what poles?
What if we, what if down the road, we wanna add some stuff to the, into the ground there?
Again, it should all be low voltage, so it shouldn't matter.
Do you have an A2 survey for your house?
I have an A2 survey because I have a foundation, a septic. You don't have a septic down there. Right? I have foundations that I have to deal with.
Yeah.
There's no foundations down there. And I have, and I have high voltage in the ground. You guys should not have high voltage in the ground.
But we already. We'll have to rip out the existing high voltage in the ground.
We're gonna rip it up.
The existing lights are all high voltage.
Right, right, exactly.
If you're talking about redoing the landscaping down there anyways, which is what you're talking about, and you're talking about putting in irrigation, you're gonna have to pull them out anyways. They probably weren't done right in the first place. More than likely, they're not eighteen inches. You know?
So Eric and Scott have done a lot of work on this.
I understand that, but a, again, he's gonna take, the A2 survey guy is gonna take a guess on the electrical. He's not walking around with a ground sounder. He's gonna say point A, point B. Suggested locations for electrical. He doesn't know where it is. He's assuming that someone went A to B.
Is that all that you're requiring, Adrian, to make this, uh, good for yourself?
No, that's my point, is that he's gonna guess at the electrical cause he, you don't have a plot plan for how it was done, so he's gonna guess at it. He's not gonna actually go out there and look for it. There's no, unless he walks around with a metal detector and tries to take a shot at it.
No, we can, we can call, uh, somebody and have them find out where the electrical is, right?
Yeah, and so, but you, I'm, I'm trying to understand why you need it if you do this correctly. If we do low voltage like we're supposed to on all of these monuments, right?
Yeah.
Go to low voltage like we should be. And then you don't have the, you don't have the concern. The only thing that should be one-ten down there is that well, or my biggest, probably would be two-forty is the well. That's the only thing. You know, the fact that it was done a different way doesn't mean it was done the correct way. I'd rather see you spend the money replacing the electrical that's in the ground cause you're gonna run a risk of hitting it whether you try to find it or not. You might as well start from one end and pull it out and replace it with one-ten. Do all of the lighting at once. Spend the twenty-five hundred on converting us to low voltage everywhere so it's done correctly. And do that in coordination with redoing, cause they talked about, you know, they wanted to recompost and put, if you're talking about putting irrigation in, that also means that you're talking about reconstituting that soil. Which means you're gonna hit that electrical, you're gonna have to take it all out anyways. So you're talking about doing an A2 survey on electrical that you're then gonna pull out to fix the greenscape. So you're literally trying to find stuff that you're gonna remove. Spend the money on putting the stuff back correctly. Rather than spending it on marking stuff that you're gonna pull out, is all I'm saying.
All right, so can we come to a, a compromise on this and, and when? Well, no, you're gonna have to vote on this. You already made.
It's not spending twenty-five hundred, that's my problem. It's spending it on something that you're literally gonna pull out in the process of doing this whole. Everything you're talking about, you're gonna end up pulling it out.
All right, anybody else? Paula, Jeff, you have any comments?
Yeah, Jeff Murray, what do, what are your thoughts? Cause this, this is way over my head, so. But I, but I understand what Adrian's saying, that if you're pulling it out, it's, it's not money well spent. So, Jeff, what are your thoughts?
Oh, it's just, I've just been listening and I, I'm not, I'm not really, uh, up, uh, up to speed on the subject, to be honest with you.
You don't need an A2 to play so well, even if you put a new one in. You don't need an A2 for anything that you're talking about doing. Not one thing. It's not a requirement for the building department, I can tell you that.
So we're gonna tear out, we're gonna tear all the lighting circuits as part of this, as part of this?
You're gonna have to anyways, cause they're talking about reconstituting the soil down there, so you're gonna have.
Well, if they're eighteen inches, they're gonna be far enough down.
If, if. They want to take all the topsoil out and put new topsoil.
If it's PVC or buried conduit, it should be, if it's rigid conduit, it could be six inches, but if it's, if it's, if it's PVC.
And it was, but it was probably put in when there wasn't a requirement to put down marker tape like there is now.
Yeah, you see YBD anyways if you go and excavate it, right?
Right. Well, that's the problem though. They're gonna tell you the start point and the end point, but they don't know the in-between. All they're gonna say is, it's buried somewhere in this lawn. Good luck.
We're gonna kill the circuits anyways if you're gonna excavate.
But you're gonna end up pulling it all out and doing it with one-ten. If you're talking about redoing everything down there and adding even more stuff, we never should've had one-ten in there in the first place.
We're gonna need one-ten for the lights.
No.
Yeah, low voltage, you're never gonna get the, the current is too high to get the, the wattage of those lights. You're not gonna get enough. Low voltage JC, you're gonna need one-ten.
Now that they've gone to, now that they've gone to LED, you absolutely can.
I disagree with you on that one.
I'll send you to my lighting guy.
Three hundred, five hundred watt lights, it's, it's too much current.
Oh, God. No, you're not gonna wanna do that. You're gonna split that up.
Okay, so since we have some.
You're not doing wattage, you're doing lumens is what you're looking for. And the alumens efficiency on LSE, LED is way higher than it used to be. In the last seven years, it's doubled, so.
Okay, Jeff Murray, since you are the arbiter of this and Paula and I need some guidance.
How'd I get this?
Cause you're the middle ground.
I was trying to stay quiet.
I know. That's why we asked you.
Jeff, it's up to you to get us out of the colonial days here.
So what's, what's the reason for the survey? Eric, just one more time, like forty thousand foot view.
So here's what I want. You know, I want, if we're gonna be committing a fair amount of money of town projects, I want it to be on a piece of property we surveyed to begin with. And when we're all done, I want as-built where all the major stuff is on that property. That's what I want.
But why do you want that? Why?
Well, I could tell you why, because I've hit in doing construction, uh, my, my job, I've, we've hit things that weren't on maps.
Right, but they're not gonna go find the electrical.
I've hit things on duck, I've hit, I've hit four-forty and all kinds of stuff in duck banks.
Yeah, but you're not gonna find, they're not gonna go find every piece of electrical on an A2 survey. They're not gonna do it. I'm just telling you right now, for twenty-five hundred bucks, they are not paying someone to come out with a ground sensor and find all that stuff.
So, so just, just one more question for Eric. It's just, how much of, how much of this project has been completed to date? In your estimate, in your estimate? Your estimate, estimation?
Um, the survey, as far as I know, they haven't come out and done any physical surveys, so they've done the map work, probably.
So zero, so zero that PO's been expended.
And, and no offense to you, Eric, but I, I'm surprised that you signed something for twenty-five hundred bucks without running that by this, us first.
Why?
Why?
Because this is a, this is a town project that we've, we approved doing the monument. We didn't approve doing an A2 survey. That's a whole nother ballgame.
Honestly, Adrian, what I was trying to do is speed up the process and not wait to come back to a board of selectmen meeting, then get approval to do the A2 survey, then come back a couple months later with the next step. But you know what? I was wrong on that. Uh, I'll take my lumps. I'll tell the guy we're not doing the A2 survey. I'll pay off whatever it takes to do and, you know, then we can proceed.
And when Ron comes, when Ron comes and he's gonna start to do the work, and that's the time to put the irrigation in.
Actually, no, you wanna talk to, figure out if we're, we need to make a decision as to whether we're reconstituting the soil or not. Because if we are, you're not gonna do the irrigation until after that soil's reconstituted. Cause according to the, according to the stuff that we heard, the, the top so many inches of soil is complete garbage. It was, it's got too much sand and, and silt. Do you remember that meeting?
Right, we, yeah, but we're, we're gonna add soil to the top, Adrian.
But you can't add without taking something away, otherwise you're too high and you won't be able to continue in the space.
We won't be too high anywhere. We, we've already gone over that.
Who'd you go over that with?
The people that gave us the prices.
For soil?
Yeah, they, they already told us that we don't, we don't have to worry about whether or not we're adding too much or, or doing, or taking some away. The, 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 the ground levels in, in, in areas won't be affected. None of the stuff will be affected by adding topsoil over the top of that. Nothing there.
Who do we talk to about this? I mean, it's a project.
The people that were involved with the quotes.
Who? I'm asking.
Wha, what's that lady's name, Eric?
We got a quote from Randazzo.
Randazzo?
From, from Ron Bisson, so far.
Okay. I, I'm just, I would tend to disagree with that and until somebody's gone down there with a, um, a rotary laser and checked grade, I don't think they can give you an honest answer. Just, yeah, tell you. If they haven't gone down with a rotary, then they're guessing. You know?
Okay. So where are we at this?
I don't know. We're, we're not in a good spot here.
No. We're not. I'm not trying to be a pain in, pain in the butt. I'm not. I just hate, Jeff hates spending money on, on software. I hate spending money on public works projects of any kind where we're not spending it efficiently. We're doing this backwards. Like Jeff, like Murray said, we're gonna shut off the circuits anyway, so it doesn't matter where the electrical is. You know? And you're gonna have to change it, change it up. No, wha, whatever you do, even if you decide to keep the one-ten on, on the light pole. Maybe you, you don't keep it on the smaller stuff, but you want it on the flagpole, right? That would be the only thing that there'd be any question in my mind. But generally, you can do the flagpoles too, because you don't do the light from the ground. You can run it up the inside of the pole and have it come down instead of up.
Okay, so are, as a board, just, just can I take a poll? So are we all willing to spend the twenty thousand dollars on this project? I mean, I understand it's gonna have to go into the next budget cycle, but are we willing to start from scratch on that area within the town? I am, because.
I'm not. Not given the amount of roadwork we have and tree work and community center and all the other stuff in the pipeline, my lord.
So we're, so we're one-one. I'm asking the rest of the board members, because I believe that is the most visible spot for our community. It's that, that center, it's that bridge. That's what people drive through and over and that's what they see.
It's the first thing you see, you come around the corner.
So, Scott, are you willing, are you willing to invest when the next budget cycle comes up on actually doing this correctly?
I am.
Okay, Paula?
Paula?
I'm, I'm still mulling it over. Go to Jeff.
No, I, I'm in the same boat as Paula. I, I, I wanna get some more information. I wanna go sit down and talk to Scott and maybe.
All right, so Eric.
Get a, get a picture of what's going on. Because I'm not gonna make, I'm not gonna make a twenty thousand dollar decision in.
No, no, heck no. And I, listen, I will gladly go down there and walk it with anybody that wants to. I will bring a rotary laser and then we can check grade differences and see what kind of variance you have from A to B. I will volunteer to do that. But if we're gonna, I don't not see the purpose of doing a survey for twenty-five hundred dollars for something we haven't even committed to yet.
All right, then we're all willing to sit there and evaluate. So Eric.
Oh, all right. Adrian, would you be, would you be willing to commit to this tonight if we didn't do the survey?
Commit to what?
Commit to the project?
The twenty grand? No. No, I honestly, listen, it's not that I don't, I, it's not that I don't agree, it's a, it's a, it's a place I'd love to spend twenty grand. It's that I know all the stuff that didn't get into this year's budget that we still need to do. I mean, you, you're on a, Scott, you're on a committee right now that's gonna be looking for what? Four hundred fifty thousand dollars that, what we don't have right now to build a community center? On top of the four fifty we do have. That's gonna be a hard swallow. I mean, how much of this, you know, we've got a couple million in roadwork, just roadwork. It's, it's, it's. We've done a lot of great things for that, for that area down there. And, you know, Jerry's working on doing some more stuff, I get that. But there has to be a happy medium. We can't keep spending money on a park that looks good, doesn't get a lot of one-on-one use. We use it for ceremonial things and we use it for, for parades and stuff, but beyond that, you know, I wanna see us, listen, if that park is that important, let's do a fundraising thing for it. Let's do something for a park beautification. We'll put a big sign down there with a, like the church does, put a big sign down there with a thermometer and start raising money. But to go back to the town and say, hey, I want another twenty grand for that, that's gonna be a tough sell, I think. Harder than I think you guys realize. But I could be wrong.
All right, so what are we asking Eric to do? No survey? Yes or no? Did we make a motion on that? I seconded it, I thought. So let's vote, let's vote on this. Are we voting to have the survey done or not? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll vote, aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, come on, Jeff, you gotta do something. You gotta say no. All right, thank you.
Just because I don't have enough information, I would.
No, understood. Listen, I, 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 to be really honest, Adrian, Adrian is extremely knowledgeable on this and I will, I will lean on his expertise. But Adrian, I will tell you, you gotta get with Eric and you gotta get with Scott. You gotta find a solution for that, that spot of land, because it is, it is important just for the eye appeal of our community.
It's in dire need of help.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let's get together before the next meeting and get a picture.
So I, so obviously, we're not gonna have any kind of drawings, because we're not gonna have a fucking survey. Excuse my language. Sorry, that was inappropriate.
Whoa.
Let me finish, then you can have, you can say whatever you want.
Don't swear on a public call.
What do you want me to do to proceed now? Are we just putting this on hold? Are we giving Jerry the authorization to continue and Ron Bisson with the paperwork they were planning on doing? Or are we telling them to be on hold? What are we doing? Or are we telling them to be on hold? What are we doing?
We already. Eric, Eric, we already approved that. You can move forward with Jerry and getting the 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 Agent Orin monument worked on. We're going to have to work on the A two on the survey or how we're going to draw plans for what we're doing moving forward. We will move that park forward. Okay? So all we're asking, all that's being asked for now is don't spend the money on the A two survey.
Okay, I will tell the contractor and I will back out of that. I that's fine. All right.
Eric, if you want to reach out to me offline, I will take time to go down there and walk with you and see if we can come up with a solution. Scott, if you have time, that might be good, too.
Yeah, but you know, we need Paula. We need Jeff because everybody's voting, Adrian. Let's come up with a solution. All the time that me and Eric spent down there this summer is now, you know, hung in the balance because you guys voted no.
I'm not trying to throw wrenches at your idea. I'm just I'm asking the questions that somebody should have asked a while ago. You know? And the problem is, when you go to get a bid from someone, they're never going to tell you that you shouldn't do something because they want you to spend money with them. Have to be just a little bit.
Let let's move on to the next topic, because I am still on uh, seven. Eric.
Right, and that's in my administrator's report. Turn it back to you.
All right, let's go to old business. And we have the town personnel policy. We're going to skip that. Do we? Can I skip it, Eric?
No, why don't just vote on vote to accept it and be done with it.
Somebody make a motion. Let's go.
Make a motion to accept the town's new personnel policies, which we've all had for months on end, and Eric has spent a ton of time on.
Okay.
My second.
All right, discussion. Eric, what were the latest changes made to that? Just so we know.
So there were two things. One, you asked me as a board to go back in and put in the ability for a person to take half the cost of the medical insurance in lieu of adopting the medical insurance. That is in the personnel policy. I also sent it to the town's attorney that deals with personnel issues, uh, whose name is escaping me as a moment for a review, and I made some changes based on their commentary.
Did we have any pushback? Did it get kicked over to the union for consideration at all?
It has not gone to the union yet.
So once we approve it, you'll send it to them?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Thanks.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the Community Connectivity Grant, Eric, when is that going to get started? I know they're moving it along. What's the state going to move through its project?
Uh, I don't have a date when they're going to be done with the construction of the first phase. And they will not release the letter to the town stating that they will grant us a permission to work in the the towns right away until they complete the first, the DOT completes their phase. So we're sitting. They're sitting on that. They've been sitting on it since, you know, end of April, basically.
Is the is the DOT still staying October for completion on their side?
Uh, they are, but it's in a sense, it's going to be too late for this construction season anyway, realistically. Because that means the earliest we're going to get a letter is October. You know, and then we got to get it to the contract. We got to get the money from the connectivity project. We got to turn that back in to the connectivity portion. Um, we got to get the funding established and then we can send it out to bid. That's the or to to award the contract, I should say.
Well, a question. Can we find if we we already know we have approval for the funding, correct?
Yes.
Can we fund it? And while the process is being drawn out, can we do our what we need to get done on town funds and then repay the town?
I don't think so, because I don't think we can get credit for work done prior. It's like we can't go back and get paid for things. You know, that we haven't act that we've done prior to when they allowed us the money. I don't think we can start early.
I just thought, given that we'd already had approval for the product project. That was my.
All right, so if we can't do that, then Eric, just as, uh, you know, uh, an attempt to pass five Mr. Mandeville on that one, can you find out from the state if we could do that? I mean, because that way you could get some work done, but obviously, we're not going to do it if there's a risk that we won't get paid for it. So if you could just ask that question, that might uh get that done.
So are you basically willing to allow me to sign a contract with a contractor for essentially three hundred thousand dollars without being absolutely sure the state's going to reimburse us? Is that the question?
No, we're not willing to do that, but we're willing to have you ask the question. If we did some of the work in advance, would it count under the contract?
Given the given the the preapproval process we already had, we're basically in submission, right?
Yep.
If there Eric, if there is even a slight chance that we won't get reimbursed for one dollar.
Then you don't do it.
Then you're not doing it.
No, but doesn't it hurt to ask?
I can ask the question.
It wasn't hurt to ask. Okay. Let's go. So COVID update and town hall reopening. Eric.
That's on there because it's been on there for the past four months or five months. The town hall is open by appointment only, other than the town clerk is open by ringing the bell for uh transfer station stickers. So far, it's that's worked reasonably well. I see no reason to change personally.
Yeah, we're somewhere around eight hundred, so we got maybe give or take four hundred more stickers to go, right?
Okay, so if you don't have any problem with it, that's how we'll continue to go.
Are we still on par with surrounding towns?
Yes. There's only I think I know of only one town that's really reopened like fully. And then as in not by appointment only. Most of them are doing something similar to what we're doing.
Great.
All right, storm recap. Uh, new business. I'm sorry. Is there anything else, Eric, that we're missing from old business? It's not on there, so we're not doing it. New business. Let's go through the storm recap.
Uh, I sent you all a copy of my notes on what I thought we did right and wrong with the storm. Do any of you have any commentary on that?
Uh, I thought you guys did you and Amanda and the town did an excellent job keeping the uh, keeping me personally informed with your updates. I thought that was extremely helpful. Thank you.
Good job.
Upcoming road maintenance projects.
I talked about that in my administrator's report, so I don't think I need to hit on it here unless you guys have specific questions.
No. Well, I I'll just sit there and go, Eric did send us some additional uh road maintenance programs. I had gone on a Eric and I drove a portion of the town last Friday. We sat there and looked at the conditions of the roads. I asked him to sit there and do some updates for you as far as how much potential money it would take us to get through various types of projects that we saw that need worked on. So culverts, roads, uh, guardrails and so on. So if you read that, it's a very interesting. It's something we need to take into account when we do budgets and we try to determine how best to spend our money to do all these projects we need to do. Uh, steep grant application. It's out, Eric.
Yep, Steve. We've applied for it. We haven't heard back from yet. We should hear back in another couple of weeks. It'll be a pretty quick approval process or not.
Okay, Veterans Monument Park. Um, we talked about that at length, uh, but we do have Jerry in the back. So Jerry, is there something that we need to sit there and discuss related to the Agent Orange issue? Or are we all moving forward? Is it all good, Jerry? Or there's something you need to talk to us about?
Well, on August twenty eighth, on August twenty eighth, I signed off on the monuments and uh and Nolan's monument has got those. We're in the in the works.
Okay.
Right now, right now, the end date, I have to set an end date. So we've set an end date for March twenty ninth of two thousand twenty one, which is Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Now we're going to watch the weather. So when it gets to within a couple of weeks of the twenty ninth, uh, still give us enough time to do it for brochure, contact the papers, let them know when we're going to do this. And I'd like to do it evening. So the time change is March fourteenth.
Yeah.
Today, late savings time. And so I figured probably around six o'clock of the twenty ninth. I don't think we're going to be there for more than a half hour, forty minutes.
Okay, let us know what else we need to do to help you get that accomplished. All right, so I know that Jerry also looked at a a howitzer for a monument. And I understand that that was taken, so that is also table. Go from there. Uh, F consideration, consider transition of beautification committee to parks and grounds committee. Do you have um you have a motion on that? There you go.
I did make a motion. So for the record, the beautification commission basically resigned, not because they were pissed, because they just didn't feel like holding meetings and do all the things committees are supposed to be doing. What they really want to do is plant flowers for the town, you know, and water stuff, and they're happy to continue them. But Joan had suggested that what the town really needed was basically not a beautification commission. Um, you know, but something along the lines of, you know, of parks and grounds committee with a bigger mandate. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. You can make a decision that you think that's reasonable or not. Um, you know.
So we're going to potentially appoint a new committee to oversee the parks and grounds. No.
Who said no?
Huh?
Did someone just say no?
I didn't say no.
Okay.
Does any does the rest of the board feel that that's appropriate? I mean, we have so many committees right now. Scott, go ahead.
No, I would I would say that we need to see something in writing what everybody's going to be doing. You know, what their mission is, um, why they wanted to do this.
Well, they they it's not that they want to do it. It's that they didn't want to do this stuff. They wanted to stick to what they original mission was.
Well, uh, for me, I understood it. They they said that all they're doing is planting flowers, so they don't need a committee to plant flowers.
So they recommended something else. Whatever it may be.
So what? So all I'm saying is what what are they saying that they want to take care of?
No, so so Joan has basically said they want to keep watering stuff and they want to keep planting flowers. They don't want to be a committee. They don't want a lot of responsibility. They just want to do what they always do and not be bothered, basically. Um, which is fine. You know, they're volunteers and we appreciate it. Joan had suggested that it would make more sense to have an actual parks and grounds committee. You know, to make some of the more structural decisions about what we did. Um, you can adopt that recommendation or you cannot. I mean, it's up to you. It's not. I'm not telling you you need a parks and grounds committee. I'm just putting this forward because she asked me to.
I I spoke to Joan as well, and I I but what I do think we need to do is what Scott said is we need to sit there and determine what this new committee would be all about. And we probably need to make sure that we can staff it. So I would sit there and say, let's push this off until our next meeting to determine if we can get it staffed and if we can give them a a mandate.
Well, and and I I I just I'm not trying to nitpick here, but I I think in all fairness, Joan's point was that the beautification committee had gone beyond what was originally asked of it. And it was doing things like working on irrigation and things like that, that there really wasn't what their original intent was. And that was kind of her point. So in all fairness to them, they felt like they were outside the scope of what it wasn't whether they wanted to or not wanted to. They felt like they were outside of their mandate, so.
All right, I get it. So I don't think that it's probably appropriate for us at this individual meeting to sit there and establish a new committee without putting forth what the mandate is going to be. So let's table this and move this to our next meeting and let's move on to something next. Um, the fiber optic connection at the hall.
Side note, if you're gonna, we're gonna do that, let's put a list together of all the properties we would talk about encompassing for that.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Fiber optics. Eric, is it completed?
So the physical connection is completed. It's been tested all the way through for throughput. Um, it's finally turned on with C and all we got to do now is switch the bloody firewalls around and connect through that instead of the I'm hoping that gets done this Thursday. I'm I'm trying to get Ed to get in here and make the physical connections, him and Lance, who's the network administrator. So I'd hope to say we were on the fiber at this meeting. We are not.
CIP report. Well, let's go this way. Let's ask one quick question on that because it's holding up. What's the timeline? What are they telling you it's going to get done?
So when I talked to Ed last week, he was hopeful he was going to be in last Thursday and did it. Um, he has not. I haven't talked to him since then. Um, but I will reach out to him this week. I'm hoping we get it done this week.
Okay. Right. Uh, the CIP report for Tom building some properties.
I sent that to the board. If you have any comments, let me know.
Anyone have any comments?
No, let's put it on next month's agenda.
Brand new truck for the volunteer fire department.
Which one? They got two.
So we haven't met since the last time the fire department took possession of the tanker. So the tanker is in. They've been running around madly road testing um, and uh, training people on its use. So as far as I know, it's pretty close to being in service right now.
They got the Gator in as well.
Correct.
Okay. The Public Library mural restoration.
So we initially hired an individual from Mannett's Field to do the gross restoration of the mural um, by removing the graffiti. There is some touch up needed to be done. Sarah Whalen, the original artist, will be in uh, this week and next week at some point. Um, she's, I think, estimated it's going to take her about two and a half days to retouch up the mural. So that should be completed uh, within the next couple of weeks. Several other members of the community have volunteered to reapply the two coats of varnish over the top of it, since we disturbed some of the department.
Does the uh, does the insurance company require us to seek restitution for that?
Um, I don't know. So far, we haven't even spent enough to be over our deductible.
Um, we should speak, seek restitution at least for that, then.
Yeah, I I mean, I I've talked to the resident state trooper, you know, they initially, you know, his initial thing was that um, his initial estimate we put in was for it basically being about five thousand dollars. Um, it will be less than that, so we should. I I don't see any reason why we won't end up with restitution out of this.
Good.
So just so I understand this, this is restitution from the perpetrators.
Yep, right.
We're all on the same. So
Yes.
Attorney O'Brien, this will, you know, we this will be submitted to the public attorney's office and the the state attorney's office when this comes up for uh, hearing.
Yes, it will.
Okay.
And you'll be notified when they, you know, probably take a, you know, a plea of uh, whatever.
So it's a minimum of five thousand dollars because knowing how we do things, there will be additional costs that will come up that uh, we will have to incur and we need to get all of our potential money. Right?
Well, I hope so. Well, I hope so. I mean, I, I don't know. It depends on what they have to offer and what the court wants to do with them and what the prosecutor wants to do and.
I think we should send Diane in her Mrs. Claus outfit.
If that's what helped us to town of Andover, then we're going to do it.
I would be glad to accompany her and uh, you know, and uh, see what we can do.
Alright.
Dennis, when this goes before the judges, is, do they usually do multiples of the restitution?
No.
No, it's individual and, and they, you know, I, I'm not a criminal attorney. I haven't done criminal law in a long time, but uh.
The answer is no.
I don't think so. I think there will be, you know, probably pleased that, depending on whether these guys have uh, experience in the criminal court, they will probably apply for, you know, uh, certain programs that will enable them to uh, you know, not have a record after a while and uh, you know, that, that will, we'll have an opportunity to uh, to comment on that.
They allow a victim impact statement even on that type of stuff where we can seek to, to ask for certain things. So that's why I brought this up.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't been in court on one of those things for ages. I, I don't know what they do with those anymore, but it's uh, you know, we will be notified. We'll have an opportunity to, to weigh in.
Alright. Okay, thank you, Dennis. Um, curb guards at the public library. Uh, the library um, board has requested that curb guards be put into the parking lot to protect cars from uh, damaging the mural and hitting the, the library. Um, at one point in time, Adrian and I met with uh, Kathy DeRozers and Diane Grignere down at the library to talk about it. Um, we talked about it. We were um, we had agreed to sit there and try to move this forward, but I know there's some hesitation, so Eric, can you explain to us the, the pros and cons of the bumpers that are being requested?
And did you have a chance to sit down with them prior to this meeting to see if you could find some middle ground with public works in them?
Um, I'm not sure there is middle ground. I mean, it really comes down to if you're going to make the bumpers effective, you're going to have to put them out far enough so that when a vehicle slides back to their rear tires or up against the bumper, you still have three feet clearance between the buildings. I mean, that's where you put them in. And that puts them about seven feet away from the building, which to me does not seem like a great idea, just because it means there's an awful lot of hand shoveling. Um, you know, and there's more limitations on the parking lot. Um, but the library commission feels adamant that, you know, they can't possibly protect the mural without them. Um, I mean, I think from a protection standpoint, ballards are more effective, but at the same time, they offer a lot more visual noise when you're looking at the mural. So I guess what I'm saying is there's not really any great solution. Um, they asked me to authorize it and I said I didn't think it was appropriate, but I thought, you know, ultimately that's a board of selectmen decision, not me. So here we are.
Well, I, I think the second part of that was that they, do we have a price on ballards? Like they had someone that was going to donate them, I think, and donate actually putting them in or something. They had some methodology for doing this on a very cost-effective basis. I think that was also one of their points.
So it's, it's not a cost issue. The, the library committee will foot the bill for it. So it's not costing the town directly. The friends of the library will pick up whatever costs were associated. It's simply a question of do we allocate the time to shovel the thing out every time it snows? Do we add, you know, more surface area that can't be handled by a machine but can be handled? You know, get shoveled by hand. That's really the question.
Do the, if you put ballards, it's more effective, but it still doesn't solve the shoveling problem. Is that correct?
Well, the thing about ballards is ballards, because it's the bumper that hits the ballard. So the ballard can be put right three feet away from the building as opposed to a bumper which has to be considerably farther from the building to be effective. That's really the difference between the two, but ballards stick up a lot higher and visually, you know, if you're viewing the mural, that's, that's a disadvantage.
So i- if the current parking spaces which are drawn, you're telling me that the library couldn't put the parking curb or guard at the end of the park, current parking space that's outlined there?
Oh, you could, but it wouldn't solve your hitting the building issue because that's only three feet away from the building and any vehicle backing up can still hit the building before the bumpers hit, right? Anybody with a decent sized truck is going to hit the building, you know, prior to coming into contact with them. Just the overhang of the vehicle.
My sarcastic comment is someone like Adrian who has a truck does not read. I'm sorry. It was sit there. It was totally there.
That was good. I like that. I, you're right, I don't. I use, I use, I use the internet. I don't go to the library. I order my.
So I'm sorry.
I'm in the twenty first century, so.
Ten thirty or whatever it is and it's getting late.
For somebody in your age, gotta get used to this.
I will tell you.
Come on, Adrian.
I will tell you, the library, the library committee would very much like to get these installed. Um, they feel, I mean, the, the issue of shoveling to me is, is yes, there's, they have to get out of their truck and shovels part of that library anyway. So we're asking them to shovel, you know, another ten feet.
Well, no, it's more than ten feet, Jeff. You're talking about shoveling seven feet wide by the whole length of that building. It's what, twenty something feet, twenty-five feet? So you're talking, you're talking three passes of, on a twenty-five foot long run, it's going to be closer to seventy-five feet.
Okay, so they have to shovel twenty-five and a half feet or thirty feet.
Times three, times three. The shovel's not seven feet wide, Jeff. The shovel's, you know, on a good day, twenty-two inches.
Okay, so that's the issue?
So are we going to put a physical fitness standard on for public works so they don't ruin their back doing this on top of the front walk and the sidewalk? Where else do we shovel, Eric?
Oh, well, we shovel the town hall. Um, we shovel the library steps. We do some shoveling in front of the fire department. Um, you know, obviously we shovel the sidewalks of public, you know, the front of public works. Um, there's not a real lot else we hand shovel.
Do we have one of the smaller snow blower setups like a, like a Toro? A Toro, like a rubbery or something?
We do not. We do not own anything of that sort.
Is it worth considering? I mean, we're adding, I know this, this doesn't sound like much to anyone looking at it and I get it, but given the quantity that we're now looking at overall, this may sort of be the straw that broke the camel's back, you know?
Um, so what I would say is that eventually if the connectivity grant project goes in and we get the sidewalks in the front of the library, there might, probably will be enough sections of sidewalk we're going to end up, you know, plowing that some sort of snow blower makes sense. Um, I wouldn't have bought it until we had that in, but you know.
And how much does that piece of equipment cost?
Twenty-five hundred dollars for a commercial, two staged with an in, in feed. I just bought one for my building. It will manic. We do three hundred and ninety feet of sidewalk.
There you go. Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yep, all day, every day. Has a commercial transmission, so if it gets something stuck in it, it doesn't have share pins. There's no share pins to replace. It's got a commercial training.
Alright, anybody else have any comments? Um, because we need to vote on it, I am going to sit there and make a motion. Eric, I'm not sure you had that in the motions, do you? You don't?
Nah.
Okay.
I do not.
I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the library committee to install their curb guards at the public library in front of the mural.
I second that.
Who seconded that?
Scott.
Scott.
Good for Scott. Okay.
Scott's on it tonight. That's like his fifth or sixth one, so.
Good, he's on fire. Alright, any, uh, any discussion?
Eric, what, so, I mean, I know you and I talked about this after Jeff and I had the meeting, but there was no opportunity to sit down with the library folks and try to see if there's some middle ground on this?
I mean, look, I've gone around the bend with the library folks a bunch of times on this, going back the last four months. I don't think one more sit down with them, you know, we just disagree on the approach. But you'll make a decision and that's what we'll do.
Okay.
If the, if the curb guards go in, there's an, I mean, I know that driveway pretty well, so there's enough room for people to back out and.
Will you tell us? You just said you know the library, that parking lot really well. Is there enough room?
I don't, I'm, I'm trying to visualize it. Um.
Well, I, I, I would believe the question is really not. If you put them where Eric believes they need to be put, you would be moving the parking space back three feet, four feet, Eric?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Yes.
Um, if you put them where the library committee wants, they just want to put them at the end of the current parking spaces. They may not be effective there, that's the issue.
So they're going to be.
Are we letting the library make the determination of location?
That's what they told you and I. You want to ask Diane Grigner? She's right there in a black square.
Yeah, I guess I'm not clear. So they're going to be three feet from the building where the, just where the mural is, or they're going to go all the way down past the mural?
Just where the mural is. I don't think they're going all the way.
I believe there were only five of them they wanted to install.
So maybe we just have to put something on those parking spaces that says like small cars only or something.
But the question is, are you, if you sit there with the library committee and you say that the, the curb is not effective unless it's placed here, that's one thing. Because right now there's lines drawn in the parking spots and they anticipated putting the curb at the end of the aligned parking spot.
Is, if Diane's on the call, can we just have her chime in? I really would like to, some public input on this.
Amanda, can you sit there and see if Diane Grigner is on her spot and ask her?
She just unmuted. There she is.
I love your hair, Diane. Can you help us out with this just a little bit, please?
Sure, what do you want to know?
Have you been listening to the conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, are, are, Eric has a concern about placement. Or do you have that same concern or have you guys already thought about this and? I mean, it's possible you brought it up. Unfortunately, the conversation was a while ago and I don't remember it. I don't know if Jeff does, whether that was part of our conversation. I don't believe it was. I know we talked about the shoveling being a concern. I think that's a bigger issue we have to solve on public work side, but as far as placement, are you understanding that if they're placed in the current end of spot location, it may not guarantee you this walking space that you want for that lower entry?
Yes, I understand. Well, first Eric was talking about trucks backing in. I don't know how many trucks back in there. Not many, if any. Um, you know, they're mostly small cars. Um, and we.
Now we're stereotyping.
I was going to say they don't read, but.
Readers.
Diane has the.
Readers.
If, if, if trucks go in, they, they pull in. No, nobody backs into those parking spaces. Um.
I, okay.
Okay, we start there. Um, also, we, we find that, you know, the, the cars, again, we, we realize that uh, you know, from the bumper to the tires, you know, you've got that three or four feet. But most people I know, when I pull into a spot that has those concrete bumpers, I am not pulling my tires all the way up there. I'm worrying about the undercarriage of the car. So I'm stopping way before that. So I don't think that they need to be put three feet back from the walkway.
Okay.
Because people, like I say, you don't drive up till the tires hit those bumpers.
You don't?
No.
I do.
I, I do too, so I guess.
But I, I have a truck and I don't.
You have a car that has a, you know.
But you guys don't go to the library, so don't worry.
No, we don't.
A low car, a low car is going to hit those bumpers. A low car.
Yeah.
A low car will hit the bumpers.
A low car will hit those bumpers.
Are you doing like a standard, like seven inch spout, uh, bumper? Is that what we're doing, something like that, seven or eight?
Yeah, those concrete ones, you know, I, I don't know whether they, six, seven, six inches or so, four, five feet, six feet maybe wide.
So your intention is to put them and, and you won't worry about whether or not somebody is over them, you know, at this point?
No, in fact, I've been taking photos of cars that park now. And they don't even, they, they're not, they don't go up to the walkway. The, most cars are, you know, considerably back from the, the walkway.
Okay. Well, worst case scenario, if they start going over it, we'll have to drill them and put in some flippy flags or something. I don't know.
So, so.
I, I'm thinking, you know, how, how hard are these things? There's a couple of pins that anchor them in. If this becomes a real issue, we could always move them four feet out from the, the walkway.
Yeah, if, if you remove, remove them in the first year or two, yes, but it depends if you put some, generally, they either anchor, they anchor a unit in so they can be removed at some point, or they epoxy the bolts in so they cannot be removed. It just depends on what they do for an install. So, a couple of different ways to do it.
I'm making an epoxy.
What's that?
They always epoxy stuff and says, right, tar, cement, anything.
Yeah, they, they, sometimes they do an expansion bolt though, and the expansion bolts are great if you take them out the first year. If you don't, they're not coming out. It'll, it'll make a mess of the concrete or the, the tar. So maybe just talk to the, you know, whoever's putting them in, if, you know, that they could be moved if need be, whatever method they use.
We could do that.
And Diane, you, you feel like where, where, you're thinking about putting them, people will be able to back out and get in and out of the spots, okay, in the driveway?
They're talking about using the spaces they currently have. So yeah, they wouldn't have a problem. If they put them where Eric is, then it might be a different conversation.
There's still a lot of room there, be, beyond the.
You know, those people in those small cars though, they're not as used to turning as tightly as the rest of us carpool are though, so it's maybe a little harder for them.
Oh, I don't know. I've been driving for a long time. I think I can drive as well as you, Adrian.
No, no, I didn't suggest.
Turn my car around.
I said some of those people, maybe Paula, for instance.
Yeah, he, he, that was a dig to me, Diane, not you. Alright, I think we're agonizing over this. Let's uh.
Let's call a vote. Come on, let's call a vote.
Do it.
Alright, so the motion was made to sit there and allow the library committee to install their curb guards.
Diane with bated breath waiting.
But actually, I, I thought we had this back in June when Adrian
Hi.
Um, first selectmen met with us and said, yes, go forward with it. And so yes, I am waiting with bated breath. Worms on my tongue.
Okay, Jeff, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we are, we are going to put these at the front of the parking lot, right? We're not, we're not going to put them three feet back, correct?
Right.
Okay, because when I was looking at the, I looked at the overhead view and we start moving cars back, it looks like you almost impede the handicap areas on the other side. So I would just be worried that cars would be.
What handicap area?
Well, it looked like there was handicap there. I never saw it on the other side of the library. There's some handicap spots.
No, there is no handicap spot in front of the mural. Handicap.
On the other, on the other side to get around.
There's only going to be five of them.
Okay.
Diane, how many are there going to be?
Five. They go from the stairs, in front of the mural. They go from the stairs over to the knee wall.
No, my concern was that last one that's on the uh, west side, like if we got the cars far enough back or if there was a big truck there, like somebody couldn't swing around to get to those other spaces on the west side. That was one of my only concern.
We should hope we have that much traffic at the library.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, because if you get one handicap person, they can't get back over there to park and use the ramp, then it's kind of an issue. So I just want to.
Once those things are in, people with bigger trucks like myself will feel safer going to the library. Once those things are in, people with bigger trucks like myself will feel safer going to the library.
Oh my gosh. Okay, let's vote.
Yeah, the other eight spaces.
I thought we already voted. Everyone did this except for Jeff and Scott, so.
Okay. Voted.
Oh, I didn't see it. You were like invisible.
So we're all. I voted before you did.
I see you when you move your hand fast. I can't see it.
Look at my hand, Adrian. Looks like an angel, huh?
Yeah, okay.
That, that's good. So, uh, the Merritt Valley property, Scott, would you like to talk about that?
Well, I guess, you know, all the agonizing about this property, uh, the realtor just texted me and told me that the clocks are not interested in any donations at this point.
Okay. Alrighty, so we'll move on from that. I got the, uh, nine M, the RAM generator, Eric?
So in other words, Scott, we're not contemplating making them an offer of some sort? I mean, I'm asking.
The plant, the, the planting and zoning commission, the conservation commission said that they would only let us spend half of what we have in the open space fund and the planning and zoning said, you know, up to a hundred thousand. So, you know, there's gonna have to be a donation in there. So we don't have a deal at this time.
And their concern was what? Us agonizing over what?
What? Say that again, Adrian?
You said they rescinded the idea because we were agonizing over something?
No, I didn't say that.
The other committees agonized over it, not the board of selectmen. The other committees agonized over what to offer, potentially offer for the property.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for the.
Off the table. It's off the table. Okay, so let's go to the generator. Eric?
So very quick, the, there was a proposal made a while back by the combined, our CERC team has combined with the CERC teams for the other two towns, Hebron and Marlboro. And one of the suggestions that's been made is instead of running each town individually, running an emergency shelter, do a combined regional shelter, do it at RAM, um, you know, so we can all combine efforts. Um, advantages and disadvantages to it. If we're gonna consider it, RAM needs a generator capable of running an actual shelter, which they don't have right now. Um, so Andy Tierney will put in the grant application. They got one of the, their reps and senators to support it. Um, they are just looking for, uh, all the other two towns um, to also support that if we think it's appropriate. And so ultimately, if we got the generator, we would probably end up rewriting parts of our emergency management handbook to reflect that. And we would probably then make our existing elementary school the secondary emergency shelter, not the primary emergency shelter. So, but again, that's a political decision, you know, so I'm bringing it to you. Is this an idea you want to support? Um, and if so, there's a resolution for you to sign.
Is it broken out with a cost basis or is it equal share?
Uh, I mean, right now they're trying, in, in terms of what? In terms of utilizing it as a shelter?
Is the grant gonna be covering a hundred percent of the costs?
As far as I know, yes. They're not, nobody's asking the town to cough up money to make this happen. They're just asking to support it in concept.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with the overall thought of a regional you know, emergency center?
I don't know. How are we gonna get there in the middle of a storm all the way to Hebron?
That's.
There's a lot of small car people from the library that can get under those wires.
True.
With little Subarus.
Right.
With a Subaru.
I'll pick you all up, okay?
On the short bus.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's now sit there and get back to it. Does it, does it make sense to even contemplate regionalizing this type of service?
Well, here's, I think we need to ask ourselves as a board, if we regionalize the service and it comes back as an equal share, so a third, a third, a third, are we okay with that concept? Personally, Shannon's shaking her head. I personally am okay with the concept, only because there may be times where we use it, we get hit harder than somebody else or vice versa. And if you start talking about breaking up the share by population, then are you gonna share, are you gonna break up the running cost by amount of hours used, you know? It's too complicated. It's almost easier to say a third, a third, a third. I call it a day. That's my take on it. Somebody else's may be different.
I don't necessarily know.
I have a question for Eric. Do you know what the fuel source is? This is gonna run on natural gas or is it gonna run on fuel oil?
Presumably, considering where it is, it's probably gonna run on natural gas.
It can't run on.
So that, a, a system that big would need a tank that doesn't exist on site.
I'm just saying, it gives, it gives us another option. If it's, I know they have the natural gas line going through the school.
Yeah.
Utilize that. It would just be another option for us as a town.
Yeah.
Having it run off natural gas versus.
Oh, it would, yeah, it would have to be natural gas. You cannot run a system that big. The, the, the tank size would be insane.
Just a question I'm asking, that's all. It would just be another option for us if, you know, we had an extended shortage where we needed a generator for a long time.
What other bills are, is the town gonna incur from this?
I mean, you know, it's too early to say. We're in the concept stage. They're just writing a grant to try to fund this thing through FEMA.
Well, the hun, they, they're talking what? Probably a hundred fifty, two hundred for that thing?
I don't know what the, you know, what the dollar value is. I, I mean, I think at this point, they're just exploring this thing and say, are all three towns really on board with this? Will you send a resolution to support it so we can start looking at legislative and FEMA, you know, help to make this happen?
I, I personally don't have any problem.
Me either.
Overall, it sounds like a good idea, but. Well, because you're really talking about utilization once the storm settles out and it's, you know, the rain's done or whatever, and it's just a question of power and showers and food and services, extraordinary services, right?
Yeah. Only makes sense for me like that.
I, I'd make a motion to be in favor of it.
Yeah, I mean, what would, what would be the negatives about it?
Downside.
Driving to Hebron.
Yeah, going to Hebron. Why can't we do it at the Andover gym?
Potentially losing, losing control of, uh, our CERC team.
Right.
There's certain things on the road.
Our emergency director, like.
Do we share those services right now, but they're all possibilities. So I, I, I think we should sit there and did someone second Adrian's motion, or do we have that motion somewhere?
So we, we don't have a motion. We have a, uh, we have something for you all to sign to support it. You got a few things. You gotta come into the office and sign anyway as a group. So if you're in favor of it, you'll just come in and you'll all sign the resolution supporting that, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, we need to decide if we're all in favor.
Correct.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'll support.
Okay, so we're all gonna come in and sign that. Eric is preliminary.
Scott, Scott doesn't get to say?
I thought Scott said yes.
Scott said yes.
Oh, I didn't hear it.
Scott.
He had it again, didn't he?
Stop, Adrian.
No, Adrian, listen, Adrian's the only one that could hear this time. Scott didn't say anything yet.
I'm asking you a direct question. Are you in favor of this?
In, in concept, uh.
Concept.
Yeah, yes. It's the best thing, it's a good thing for the town. That's what I'm, I'm in favor of. It's a good thing for the town.
Okay. I'm always about good things for the town. So Route Six Corridor Forestry.
Okay, really quick. So we own, I, I put in your packet the picture of what properties that the town acquired from the state for the old Route Six Expressway. And, you know, the neighboring towns, Bolton and Coventry both want to at some point pursue a trail network along those properties. Where it would be possible in Andover is essentially the section up to Bear Swamp. Past Bear Swamp, there's no practical way to do it because some of all the homeowners have acquired the properties back and there isn't a direct connection. So Andy, or, or Coventry's suggestion is to use whole forest products to look at all of that corridor and come back to us and say, what would, what would the town potentially get out of it if we did timber harvest on that? And we end up with some sort of, you know, machine trail back there, uh, as part of it. So that's one possibility. That would be just saying, yeah, let's all kick in and all three towns do whole forest products. Scott has suggested that from an economic standpoint, we would do better by hiring an independent forester, have the independent forester evaluate our section in town. And then if we wanted to do timber harvest, send it out and basically bid it out. So the question becomes, do we even want to consider this in the first place, number one? And if we do, do we want to kick in with the other towns and use whole? Or do we want to try to go for an independent? And what is our objective with it? So that's what I ask you. Very simple.
I would tend to agree with Scott on this. My own experience with, um, looking at, you know, harvest thing, um, hull was okay, but they weren't great. They, you know, but just in general, I think they try to, they try to do a truck load rate versus a real timber rate. Um, so it's a little, a little light. Um, and I would, if we're talking about doing this, wouldn't it make sense to maybe encourage Coventry to do the same thing too, you know?
Well, I, I got some information. Coventry, the residents of Coventry were, uh, vehemently opposed to this trail being in town. I mean, I, I don't even know where this is coming from. And the section between Skinner Hill and Wheeling Road is all marsh. It's all wetlands in there. And I don't even know how we would get in there and, and do a lot of that work. I mean, it's, it's, it's really wet in there. It's wet.
Fill it in as you go.
It's very wet as you go now. And we have the, we have the rail trail in town and, you know, we have enough, we have enough, uh, we expend enough funds up keeping that as, as alone, as, as a trail and.
Does this go behind your house, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, it does, but it has nothing to do with it. It's just, it's just not the right place for it. And, um, I'd be against it. So I would like a trail behind my house, actually, but it's just so wet back there. I just, it would just be too much work to actually make it viable.
You know, well, go ahead. Just one thing, Jeff, about, one point that you, you made that, uh, one thing about wetlands in Connecticut is timber harvesting can be done in the wetlands in Connecticut.
Yep, I know that, but I'm just saying the, the goal was, and what Eric said is to put a trail in. And it's just, it's, in my opinion, it's just not the right place for it.
Well, I think his point, wouldn't they harvest, they'd harvest everything, but they try to put the trail in a dry area, I would assume, no? Or is there, or is all wet, Jeff? I don't know.
It's all wet across, it's all way away. There's, if you look, if you go up Long Hill past, um, my development, Haverhill's House, there's a stream, like a, like a depression area in there. It's wetlands all the way through that, all the way across. And it's a, it's a pretty big swath. And then you've got on the other side of Skinner Hill going towards the tree farm that's really wet as well. Area.
Me and Eric have walked that, Jeff, twice so far, the whole thing.
Yep.
And there's, and that, there, you could, and I'm not a pro or con on this thing at all, but all I'm saying is you could easily put a trail through there. There's, there's areas that you could put a trail through there, and there's areas that you could put a, you could do forestry work in there. And so, you know, I, I don't know that we're talking about if you, Eric didn't bring up whether or not we're gonna put a trail up there. He brought up whether or not we're gonna use whole forestry for that work.
The thing with, the thing was to put a road in for an eventual trail. That was, that was what he said.
Well, no, the, the forest harvesting would, would then create a viable trail, I would think.
Correct.
Some.
Correct.
I think Scott, maybe I should take Jeff out my machine for a ride through there and just see if you can find a dry area.
I mean, I gotta disagree with Scott. I mean, it's wetter in there than it is at behind the, behind the elementary school.
We should go look at that then.
It is very wet back there.
Scott, do you think I can go back there?
Adrian.
Maybe you should park them.
When I. I'm gonna take you down, we're over to Jeff's house, okay? I'll show you right where it is.
We'll, we'll go looking.
Okay, so, so, so this is, this is an issue that does not need to be decided today? Eric?
Eric? Anyways, what?
I mean, they're, they're planning and proceeding. Either we wanna jump in with them on the whole, or we decide we don't want to.
We need to talk about the, that's the, the thing that Eric wants to talk about, just aside from everything else. If you go with whole forest products, you're gonna get paid for their price list, on their price list. If you go with an independent forester and you have him go out there and give you a forestry plan, he's gonna send it out to bid and you're gonna get bids from ten different people. They're gonna give you ten different bids from high to low. Hull's always gonna give you their price list. It's always gonna be not very good. And so you know where I'm going with that. I, I would vote against not going with Hull for that reason. The forestry plan, we know, we can talk about that and the whole trail thing, uh, uh, at another time, but.
Well, Scott and Eric, and even Jeff, I mean, separate from the idea of a trail, are we talking about whether we talk about a trail later or not? Are we, would it make sense to talk about harvesting the property anyways?
There's absolutely a lot of timber in there that could be harvested and should be harvested. Already.
I'm gonna oppose the harvesting timber. I'm just, I was just, if we're doing it to put a trail, then it's the wrong reason.
But if we, I mean, maybe we could use that harvest money towards the twenty grand for the park, for crying out loud, you know?
Correct, correct. I, I have no problem with the harvesting. It's just the, the trail aspect of it. I don't think we need any more trails, especially when it's parallel to the rail trail that we currently have.
And I talked to a forester that said he could get in there in, uh, you know, right around November first. Right now he's really busy, but and then November's not far down the road. And he could make a forestry plan for the whole thing. And you get an independent guy that's going in there and giving you an independent idea about what to do and not a mill. You don't wanna go in bed with a mill.
Well, and if it's, if it's, if it is, if, let's say for giggles, you know, what Jeff is, is saying is that it is wet. If he is correct, would it be better to do that in the winter anyways?
Well, this, this particular guy that I have an idea is also a soil scientist and a surveyor. So he is fully versed on every single law and regulation about timber harvesting and the soils in Connecticut.
So since this is right up Scott's alley, and I like to look at my other members and, and, and deal with their expertise, I'm going to sit there and agree with Scott and, uh, sit there and say we should, uh, not go with Hull.
Yeah, so I, I'd make a motion now. I, I, I would like to do this though, because we're talking about timeframeing and getting in somebody's schedule. I'd like to make a motion that we not go with whole forest products, but we explore a separate timber harvest on the town properties. And look at, you know, the op, uh, availability of doing that, so that when we come back to our next meeting, maybe we can vote on doing that. Not, but, but not, to be clear, not to be talking about trail, just timber harvest at this point. Period. Stop.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I would support that.
And on which properties then?
All of them.
All of them.
All of them. Go to town. Go to town. Um, yeah, so Scott seconded. Mark Wire, it's up to you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, five, nothing.
Okay.
So just so Scott, you're gonna get with Eric and, and get the individual you thought could come up with a timber plan. And they will go even past the Bear Swamp line.
Anything that's a, the town of Andover's property.
Yeah, you got it. Okay, so, uh, alarm, our law, our law, hope, okay, alarm monitoring for town buildings.
So we have been using the Talon Dispatch So we have been using the Talon Dispatch to monitor the alarms on our building. Talon has informed us that they decided they're not going to do it anymore. Um, so I asked the Board of Fire Commissioners to examine what our options are for picking a townwide vendor for, uh, alarm monitoring. Period. I figured they can do a better job of, of sussing that out than I can.
Okay. Is Talon not doing it for any, is it just they're kicking us out or they're just not doing it at all?
No, they decided to get out of the business completely because when Colchester closed, they, uh, took on, they had to take on a much bigger coverage area. And they either got to hire a bunch more people or get rid of some of the stuff they do. And they chose to get rid of some of the stuff they do.
Okay. All right. So, uh, nine P, which is one of the additions, the cemetery account. I know I didn't, I didn't write that correctly, but.
Yeah. So neglected cemetery account, basically, uh, Kathy can speak to this, but there is a state program for maintaining old cemeteries. We apply for it pretty much every year. That's another one of those resolutions. You're all going to have to come in and sign, uh, we got to do that fairly quickly because the grant is due relatively soon. So presuming of course you want us to actually maintain our cemetery. It's basically 2,500 bucks a year from the state to help us pay for, uh, repairing gravestones and straightening up the cemetery and doing work down there.
Did we use it last year?
Yep.
Okay. So that resolution will be in our package when we all try to go in there and sign documents.
Correct. Amanda has all that even as we speak.
All right. Um, nine Q, hunting on town property.
Uh, Scott Person asked me to place this on the agenda. Um, I received at least one inquiry from residents who wanted to know whether they were allowed to hunt on town property. And my response is at least at this point, no, but that's a Board of Selectmen decision, not an Eric decision.
Are you against it or for Eric? But do you have an opinion?
I don't care.
I would say no.
I have no problem with people owning my personal property.
I, listen, and, and I don't have a problem with it on my personal property either.
Sure.
You know, to be candid, like Scott just came up on Sunday and we looked at my property. So Scott can hunt my property, but I have a little bit of concern from a standpoint of town property. If somebody didn't get a good lay of the land and made a mistake to a house nearby, the town would have some liability.
All right. That, that's, that's a good idea, but what about, uh, just bow hunting?
Yeah, archery, I have no problem with at all.
I'd have no problem with archery. I'm good with that.
Okay. So everybody's on board with the bow hunting, Eric.
Would you, would this be Andover residents only?
Yes, also.
So we would have to do something with the town hall, right? That they would have to inform.
I think they'd have to come in and, and sign up.
Yes, to say that they're hunting.
Who's enforcing?
You're the chief of police, buddy. It's all on you.
DEP. I mean, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't care and go out, it's the same.
DEP enforces it, Jeff.
Yeah, but I think we need a, I think we need something that they come in and register with the town. So we know they're there.
Yeah.
If the townsfolk calls in, we know they're there.
Eric would have to sign something.
Eric signed something and they show that they have a valid hunting permit.
And the, and the hunter identification number, exactly.
What, um, yeah, make sure they have a license, like we, license. And then what lands would we allow them to go on? Would it be like the land up by the transfer station? Cause I really wouldn't want to have them behind the school. I don't think that would be a good idea.
Just with the bow hunting, uh, Jeff, it's not gonna.
Yeah, I'm just saying, uh, the, the school is very sensitive to people walking around back there.
Yeah.
Schools in session. So I don't know if they came in on the other side, maybe walked up the hill possibly, but, um.
So nowhere on, nowhere on any open school grounds.
Yep.
It would be, not on school grounds, obvi- obviously, like on the other side of the gas line or something.
We just say nowhere on any open scoo- school grounds, bow hunting only, bow hunting, crossbow.
Take, take the town map and figure out the properties and lay it out and say, these are the only properties.
Everything but that section behind the school, once you get it, once you get past the gas line, go for it, you know?
Yeah. And should they pay a sticker fee?
No. They're already paying the state to, for a fee and they may not get anything. So.
Already paying taxes and I have to pay.
When you, and you're, we will get you a crossbow so you can get up there and go to town.
They're actually managing the deer population, which is a good thing.
Yeah. It's, and that helps with the ticks. Every deer you take out of the forest is a thousand ticks. No shit.
I haven't seen any ticks this year.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go somewhere. Our language has to improve on our meetings. All right. Everybody, come on. We can all.
I haven't sworn tonight at all. I've been.
I didn't know. Gus wanted to bet Paula.
I've been quiet.
All right.
Jeff, I, I wanted to, I wanted to swear.
Okay.
It's just probably, we need to set, we just need to set up parking areas and areas of egress. Like I just don't want anybody parking at the town hall and walking behind the school to go.
Oh, wait. And I can work on that with Eric. I think that's a good idea, Jeff.
All right. And when does this need to happen by?
Well, it starts next week, right?
Yep. It starts tomorrow.
I, I'm, I wouldn't push this. I would go slow.
Yeah.
I would announce that you're considering to do it and I would ask for public comment before you arbitrarily do this. Neither in favor of it nor against it, but I'm just saying that you're going to get some people wound up and you ought to ask for public comment before you do it.
So we need public comment through Wednesday.
Um, although I will also tell you that there's, I've certainly seen a deer stand on town property behind the town hall. Um, so somebody's hunting or in the past has hunted that property in the very recent future.
Eric, as well, as well as the right of way that goes behind my house as well. There's been deer.
There's one, there's right, one right behind your house.
Yeah. So it's, they're out there.
There's one down by Bear Swamp I saw when we were down there.
Thank God. I don't believe in guns. I'm the only one on this board that does not believe in guns.
We can work on that. I found him on my property yesterday.
Right.
Okay. So.
Just, just for, just for record, I actually looked in the town charter and actually snowmobiling is allowed on town property.
Snowmobiling is allowed.
If a lot of people probably knew about that, they'd have a fit too. So.
Yeah.
We can advertise that as a.
Deer population.
As a, we're, we're talking about trying to bring people in for your tourism.
Tourism.
It's a big deal in Connecticut.
Snowmobiling.
Nowhere to go.
Okay. So.
Now they can go to dump in Andover.
So, so what are we, what is our intention if this has to get done quickly? Are we going to sit there and, and?
It's not that complicated, Jeff. I mean, give them, when's the season open, Scott?
Tomorrow. Really? Believe it or not, September 15th. Yep. But it's not, it's, it's not pressing. You don't have to get ready for this or anything. It's not like that.
No, but if we give them a, give them a, a week or two weeks to come up with something, maybe we have something ready by, I don't know, October 1st.
Yeah, yeah.
So who's coming up with this?
And I would, the motion or what?
Town manager, I think.
Cause my decision would be no personally.
Scott.
You know, so if you want this, you guys are going to have to come up with what you want.
Well, I'll, I will definitely, I will help you, Eric. Okay?
I think McGuire should come up with it because he's the one, only one that's not pro gun. So he's the most conservative on this issue.
You know, you could use the word liberal. I'm really okay with it.
I, I, I don't want to insult you. You told me, just told me not to swear.
That's funny. All right. Um, let's, uh, I personally, Scott, I'm going to tell you that it's going to end up on you and Jeff and Adrian to, and Paula to come up with what plan you want to submit to Eric and Dennis to sit there and get it approved and we'll vote out at the next meeting.
You know what I could do as a sportsman's club member? Let me reach out to them. They're archery people because we do have some rules at the sportsman's club for hunting on their property. So let me see what kind of rules and regulations they have and submit, we can adopt some of that.
You need that picture from Paula of her daughter shooting a bow off an ATV while wearing a tutu. That would be a perfect. It's an amazing picture.
Hey, is this the youth of Andover can get involved in, in good, healthy outdoor stuff on all four? I am.
Paul is making a poster challenge.
Snow blowing, go snow, snowmobiling. Yes, Eric.
So I have one thing I missed on my report and I apologize because I thought we had added it to the agenda and we didn't. Um, and that was the policy for placement of signs on town property.
Yeah. Oh my God.
Which Dennis is here to address.
Okay. So, so let's go through and that will be, uh, nine R is sign placement in the town.
Nine R was clocked, but we don't have to do that anymore.
But we already discussed that. We'll make that nine R.
Yeah. Already, we're not, we've already talked about it and we're, we're not moving forward with that right now. Uh, Dennis, you have.
We're into the fifth hour of this meeting.
10 minutes.
I spent two hours on the softball field just before I got here, coaching my girl softball team, getting ready to play hammer at some point.
You're wasting your time.
Did you win?
I'm, I'm, you're, you know, I am going to let go with a whole slew of expletives.
Did you win?
No, we just practiced. We're, we're, we're going to play hammer. We'll, 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 we'll beat them.
Okay. We're 10 seconds into this.
Anyway, political signs, I could, you know, I, I was going to talk for an hour.
I know.
I have experience with political signs more than any of you and, and probably the whole group.
Can you tell us all about that?
I will, if you'd like. But, uh, I, I, you know, I, I, I heard from Eric, Eric that you were considering some sort of, uh, rule on political signs. There are zoning rules. The zoning rules, uh, 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 have been, uh, changed, I guess. I guess you're not applying them. A lot of towns do not apply any kind of rules on political signs. My town does not.
Don't they, don't they have a size limitation?
They might have a size limitation, but nobody violates it.
I'm just saying, everybody opposes something.
Well, they have, they have, you know, there, there, a lot of zoning regulations like ours, like yours have limitations on how long you can keep them up. It's really not necessary to have a limitation because, you know, the, the political parties generally don't keep them up longer than, you know, they'll take them down right after the campaign ends. But, uh, the question here is, I guess, uh, I'm trying to get right to the point, Jeff. I can see you're fading.
He faded an hour ago.
Yeah. He, you, he's, he's fighting it. He's fighting it. He's barely awake. But, uh, the question here is whether or not you're going to allow political signs on town property.
And the answer is?
Well, the answer is if I were you, I would just let them do it. But, uh, I, I did come up with a proposal and the proposal is sort of restrictive.
Alternating days?
In terms of, yeah. I, I mean, you, you, you definitely can, you definitely can have limitations as to time on town property because it's your property. Um, you know, and we're, 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 we're also including, uh, right of ways, the right of ways along the town roads. As far as the state roads go, that's up to them. What the state does in our town, if anybody puts signs up along the road, they pull them out and they put them in the town garage up in Mansfield. If you're a political, you know, party leader like I used to be, you can go and pick them up there.
You were a good Republican.
Never, never. I'm from, I'm from a union family in New Britain. I've been a Democrat all my life.
Eight minutes.
Everybody knows that. Well, I'm doing this for you. If you guys don't want to do anything. I mean, you know, I don't care. I mean.
Come on, Dennis. Let's go. Get to the.
I paid my dues for hours at this meeting. I'm learning a lot about guns.
I, come on.
With O's.
I get it.
Willimantic.
It was nothing on TV, Dennis.
Neither when I was going up there. You guys are all different.
The best entertainment you didn't have to pay for.
It is entertaining. It's better than watching the Vikings on.
So your suggestion is that we not really put much restriction.
Well, uh, uh, you know, most, a lot of towns do not have any restrictions at all on political signs, simply because the parties really don't go nuts with them. I don't know. Do you have a problem here? Somebody putting 10 signs up on a, on a single piece of property?
Never had a problem. I've usually put the signs up for our party and we've never really had a problem.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think that, you know, we have, there is some political banter back and forth where somebody puts a sign in front of another sign, crap like that, but it's, it's, it's good natured.
It's all, uh, you know, it's all minor stuff. I mean, there really isn't, uh, you know, but I did, I did draft at Eric's request, a, a regulation or a policy that would limit the number of signs you can put up and for how long on town property. I, I think the biggest concern you might have is, you know, people putting, I don't know, do they put up signs in front of the, uh, polling place on election day, Jeff?
Yes. Yeah. As long as they're outside of the 75 feet.
As long as they're outside of, oh, the 75 feet from the polling place.
Yes.
Yeah. Do, what do you do, Jeff? Put them up the night before?
No.
Well, we, we put them up like the weeks before, but usually at town hall, you usually pull them all together and they, they bring them to town hall on election day.
That's what, that's what we do. I mean, we, you know, they, they put up way, way too many, but it's only for one day.
Yep.
And you, and your polling place is at the, uh,
Town Hall.
Feet, uh, not the town hall.
It's going to be the gym, it's going to be the gym this year, I guess.
Okay. So it's going to be the school. I mean, sometimes we used to have some polling places here that were in schools and, you know, the, the, you know, sometimes they would make a fuss about it. But, you know, I, I, like I said, I, I don't know if you saw what I, Eric, did you give them what I wrote?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the minute. It's in your motions.
Okay. And that is, that, and that, and that is, that is a restrictive policy. And I, I'm not in favor of that kind of policy, but, uh, I thought maybe you wanted to be more restrictive. You think there's a need, uh, I'm talking to Jeff Murray now, not, not, not Jeff, the, uh, the first selectman. You think there's a need for some sort of a restriction on, on signs? Are you, are, is there sign pollution on, uh, right of ways along the, along the roads?
Not really. I mean, there's just, there's a couple of spots in town. We've put signs, like both parties have put signs and we've never really had a problem. Um.
But remember you, you can't restrict signs. If you put this policy in it, if you want to let it be unlimited, every sign essentially is equal.
So in terms of, in terms of content.
Right.
I mean, what, what, do you, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I, you might want to limit your signs on, on, uh, in the, in the right of way to smaller signs, like the four foot square signs that, I mean, I've already seen the Biden signs. I don't, I don't, I haven't seen any, any Trump signs yet here. But, uh, you know, the, the smaller signs, you certainly don't want big signs along the highway, two feet from the, uh, the travel portion of the road.
Well, I think that the.
But you haven't had that kind of problem, have you?
Most, most parties understand the rules and, and they, they put them up far enough. I mean, I've seen a bunch uh, along, uh, the, the, that are out now that are in violation, that are probably going to get pulled from the state. But, um.
Well, the state will pull them. Yes.
Yeah. The state are going to pull them because they're in the right of way. They're not 15 feet away from the edge of the roadway like they should be.
Right.
Um, because we, and I usually put them up, I put them up far enough away so they don't get pulled.
Okay. Here, Jeff, we put them, uh, you know, on private residences, like I have a, I have a big frontage in my, right out here. And we don't have any sidewalks. So I will, I may put it three feet away from the travel portion of the road. I don't see a problem with that.
No, as long as it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't impede with the line.
Law doesn't impede sightlines or anything like that.
Exactly. And we have the Lake District where, I mean, a lot of people have limited front yards. And so we can't really, you can't really have a, a big setback either. So.
Right, right. But I mean, that's what I was thinking.
Common sense here, you know?
Exactly.
I just want to get some clarification. Eric said all signs are equal. What did you mean by that?
I mean, it doesn't matter if you have an unlimited regulation. I mean, I could have a big KKK recruiting poster and I could plunk it in the towns right away and there isn't a damn thing you can do about it. Because that's a political sign. That's a, you know, signs, if you're going to allow it, it's got to be content neutral. You cannot say, I'm okay with this type of sign. I'm not okay with that type of sign. Either you allow it or you don't. That's the sucky thing right now under the, the Supreme Court's decisions.
Yeah. Those, those decisions, by the way, are not new. This is old hat. And around, around 2010, uh, you, you, I, I don't think it came to me as town attorney. I think it probably went to Mark Brants.
Yeah.
But, but, uh, the ACLU sent out a letter to every town in the state threatening to sue them if they enforce the 30 day limit on signs. Cause there can be no, there can be no limit. If somebody wants to keep a political sign up in their yard past the right, on, on their property, uh, Jeff, past the right of way, outside of 15 feet, they could keep it up all year. But in fact, nobody does that. I mean, nobody leaves it up. I mean, what, what, what I do, I've spent so many election nights, Jeff. And again, I'm talking to Jeff Murray who's done this, uh, you know, going out after the, after the results come in, picking up signs with my truck.
Yeah. After the. Yeah, after the. That's what I do on my way home. I pull all the signs, all the signs down the night, they're down the night of the election.
So, first of all, the Board of Selectment does not have to worry about what happens on private property because honestly, that is the, that is a zoning.
Right, correct. That's a zoning.
So we don't even, we're not even talking about private property.
We're not.
That's, that's not your jurisdiction or my jurisdiction.
So Eric, I'm talking, I'm talking town property. All the ones are pulled from town property that night.
Right, but what I'm saying is the town needs some sort of policy for town properties and town right of ways about what's permitted and what's not permitted. As far as I'm concerned in right of ways, the simplest thing to do is just put a four square foot maximum on the sign because that means it's not going to be so big that it interferes with the sightlines, period. Um, that means pretty much every sign that's up there right now is permitted in states. Um, and then you can make a different decision on town properties other than right of ways if you so choose.
Well, listen, I, I mean, I know we've heard from, you know, Jeff, we, we've been asking Jeff because he's on the Republican side. Shannon, do you have any input on this? Would you mind speaking on this? Can someone unmute her if she?
Would I mind speaking?
Seriously?
You have to ask.
Well, you know, I know you've been reformed lately, so.
No, I, I absolutely agree with Jeff. Um, I believe that so far, um, from either party, we really haven't seen abuses, I will say, and I know it's a public forum. Um, of late, we have had three of our Biden signs taken from in front of personal property, so I hope that crap doesn't continue. Um, not being accusatory of anybody. I don't know who took them. We don't know how it happened, but, um, they're gone. They were just put up two days ago. Um, and that did happen. It's not on state property or town property, so they're on private property. But I agree, you know, you're not, you don't have jurisdiction over private property and on public property, I think the only thing I would question is two things. Number one, my understanding of the state regulations is that the state requires that all signs be 15 feet back from any state road, so there's already regulations on state roads. And I don't think in Andover, like I said earlier in my public comment about four hours ago, um, I don't think, I mean, there are many of our properties that Jeff already alluded to that don't accommodate a 15-foot setback.
Right.
Um, on private property, like Dennis said, it, it, what goes on where he lives.
Yeah.
Um, I guess my only concern is when you're dealing with right of ways, um, there are a lot of right of ways where 15 feet, just, I, I'll, I'll give you an example. I know for last time we had municipal elections right in the right of way where Townsend Road comes off of 316, there were probably 10 signs. Um, well, that triangle of a right of way, um, you know, doesn't, doesn't even, it's not even, it's probably 15 feet in and of itself, so.
And the state, they pulled those sign once on us, I know that.
No, it is, those stayed up, those stayed.
Those stayed up.
No, but they, they pulled them once early because I remember we, I, I went down to.
That was on.
Oh, yeah, because 316 is a state road, so that would make sense.
That's why they pulled them.
Yeah.
They'll pull them after a while. They don't pull them usually that fast.
Yeah.
That was at.
So I mean, you already have regulations as far as how close you can get to a polling place on election day. Both parties do the same thing. We take all the signs the night before and move them to, you know, the, uh, locations right near the polling place where they're, they're most likely to be seen, uh, you know, with taking into account the 75-foot rule. Um, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this came up when, uh, based on what I've read in the, in the email, uh, I guess the, the chairman of the zoning commission asked Mark Brants about it.
And, and Mark. This came up because the zoning, uh, board and whose prior chair shall remain nameless for right now, um, unfortunately, put in regulations that were contrary to, uh, Supreme Court and Connecticut Supreme Court law. So that's what happened.
They're, they're contrary to the US Supreme Court.
Yeah, and Connecticut Supreme Court, yep.
Right, but remember the zoning regulations for that section, the last time they'd been modified was 2001.
Right.
So, you know, you're talking about.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, the Supreme Court case.
It's, it's not as though the First Amendment's existed for very long, Eric, but there you go. Okay.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'll be muted now.
No, no, Shannon, one more question. So Dennis, what do we have to put in place, if anything, for the town?
I wouldn't do anything unless you feel you have a problem with, with.
I think we need a size restriction. I do.
Yeah, I, I would say size restriction.
Are you okay with the four square feet that covers the, the primary?
In the right, for signs in the right of way, yeah. I don't think you should have big signs in the right of way.
You okay with four square feet, Shannon?
Okay. Let's go. What's next?
So, uh, so no, we need to, do we need to make a motion on this?
Is it even in our purview?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is. If you want to have a policy for the, for the election.
I saw for correction on wording, I would say something like, um, you know, signs in the public right of way uh, on town property would need to be no larger than four square feet. Um, do we need to, we can't do anything on timing or when, right? Do we, can we do something like they have to?
On town property, you can.
Good. You can say anything you want. You can have them up for one day, you can have them up for a year.
Property, but on town property, and the right of way is considered town property, even though, as you probably know, the, uh, the underlying land is owned by the, by the property owner.
So what do we want to say? No more than 120 days before municipal and must remove, be removed within?
Oh, no, I, I.
I wouldn't even do that, Adrian.
30.
And the thing I wrote, I wrote.
You can't, you can't do that. You can't, by law.
On town property, you can.
Yes, you can.
Jeff, you can do it on town property.
Jeff, you as a property owner can decide who puts signs on your property. The town as a property owner can decide what within the, can, can change the timing.
Within the right of way.
Change the.
Okay.
He can say we like this sign, but not that sign, this person, but not that person, but we can do time.
I put 45 days in my draft. I mean, I.
Okay, but here's the problem. We got people that are gonna do early voting as, as early as they can.
Yeah.
She's shaking her head. She agrees. So we want everybody to have a fair opportunity to, to advertise for their candidate, so.
Just, I, I would just limit the size of the signs.
I would, I would say don't put any time limit on it whatsoever.
No.
If, if, if you find, if we subsequently find there's an abuse of that, then you can come back and revisit it, but for right now, size limitation, not in the sightlines in a right of way and go from there.
What about, uh, what about in front of the polling place? You don't want signs there for a month.
No, yeah, and, and if we don't put a limit on it, then they don't, maybe they don't remove them after, you know?
Oh, they, they, they remove them. It, it's politically, it's politically bad to leave your signs up. People go nuts over it and it doesn't help your party. Nobody, we don't have a problem.
Everybody takes, the Democrats and the Republicans take them down.
Everybody takes them down.
So you want to try it this election and then see what happens? That's fine. I'm okay with that. So we'll leave it with no time limit, just four square feet limitation.
Because Adrian, if we do a timeline, we're gonna go against the Boy Scouts, anything else, anybody else that puts a sign up.
It's fine.
Yeah, you know what? You're right, you're right, Jeff, because if we, if, if we, if we regulate political signs.
Fine, so the motion is.
It also gives an opportunity for somebody else to put up a sign.
The motion is four square feet maximum, no set time, up or down. We'll address it if we need to later.
What do you think?
I need a second.
No, wait a second. How about the veterans?
You can say that's a second?
No, 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 no signs on Veterans Memorial Park.
That's always been a rule. That's always been a rule.
Are we, are we gonna put it in?
Read my, the thing I wrote?
Shannon, is that an up or a down? We read it, Dennis. Without exception, no sign will be placed on the Andover Veterans Memorial property.
All right, that's in there. And as far as signs being placed on school property, I think you really ought to get the permission of the superintendent.
It's the polling place. We don't, 75 feet. Let's do 75 feet like we always do.
School, and the school actually has a policy on signs.
No, we don't.
Yeah, yeah, you do. I got, I got sent it. It was sent to me.
Oh, good, because we were gonna consider it at last week's meeting and I didn't think we had to, but thank you for the confirmation.
Yeah, there is a policy, Shannon.
What is it, Jeff?
So can we just do 75 feet from the polling place? Would everybody be good with that?
What is the school policy, Jeff?
I can, uh, I can send it to you. I, it was sent to me a long time ago.
All right, so.
It will be politically neutral. What's that?
You probably want them there on election day.
Okay, the school wants to stay politically neutral and it's been, it's been enforced for a while. I was, I was, uh, I was told of it about, uh, six years ago.
Well, yeah, let's just do the 75 feet and then they're off the school property at that point, really, for the most part.
Okay, okay.
Now we don't have to worry about it.
Standing out there anyway, candidate, you'll, you know, for an election like this, you're gonna have people's polls standing.
Yep.
There's no doubt about it. It's gonna get a big turnout.
Four square feet. 75 feet.
In the right of way, no, 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 no signs at Veterans Park.
Okay.
No, uh, no signs in front of the town hall.
No, you can't say that because that's, that's where most of the people end up dumping them.
Yeah, it's one of the signs at the town hall, because that's where people drive up to vote on election day.
That's just for election day.
Yeah.
Well, when you, the way I wrote it, you get to, you gotta get permission from the town administrator.
Nope.
You know he's gonna give it to you.
Pull that.
All right.
Okay, so it's four square feet, nothing in Veterans Park, 75 feet from the polling place, which in this place is gonna include the school. Um, no, no time up or down.
That's law anyway. That's state law anyway, Adrian.
No time up or down. We good? Second?
Eric? What do you say?
It's not matter to me. It's your policy. It's my job to enforce it.
I think we should, Adrian, we should take out the 75 feet because that's already in state statute.
Fine, I'm good with that.
You don't need the 75. That's, that's required by, by state law.
Yeah, so we don't need to repeat that.
No veterans, no time limit up or down, no Veterans Park. I'm sorry, and, and four square feet. Three things.
So you can leave your political signs up forever or whatever kind of objectionable signs you got. Any right of way, any time property, doesn't matter, you can put whatever sign up you want. That's your policy. Am I correct?
Yes, for this voting cycle, absolutely.
Okay.
It has to be because you can't, under the First Amendment, you can't restrict the, the content of a sign.
You can do it on town property. If we own the property, you can do it.
Unfortunately.
I don't recommend that you do it, but.
Unfortunately, Eric, it's a either all in or not all in. We either agree.
Oh, I, I, I understand. I'm just bringing that to your attention.
No, we know.
The repercussion of that is that, you know.
Eric's saying he didn't trust those politicians to remove the signs.
No, Eric's worried about some dimwit doing something that would be uncouth and look bad for Andover, and he's right, but we have to hope that Andover's smarter than that.
Can we rent the river east?
Hey, hey, we don't have stuff like that happening in Willimantic, and believe me, we have more dimwits.
Yes, you do.
I could get in trouble for saying that publicly, but I'm sorry, it's true.
So we're gonna, we're gonna revisit this if necessary after this.
Okay.
Yeah, you might need an ordinance, who knows, but.
We gotta, we still need a second on the, on the, on that motion.
What is the motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, my God. Four square feet, nothing at Veterans Park, no time limitation up or down.
Talking about four square feet in, in the right of way.
I, I don't know what that.
75 feet from the polling place. That's already in, that's already in statute, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, so we didn't put that in because it's already set to.
Everybody okay with all that?
One last input, one last bunny. Diane, what would you like to say?
Yeah, um, above, nothing on the Monument Park.
Yes.
Um, we already have the one that identifies the park. We have one for the cannon. We, Jerry's gonna put something for his. Are you just talking about political signs or no signs of any type? I mean, I know no tags and all those sorts of.
We can't just, we can't just say political, we can't just say no political signs.
But can you say something about signs, um?
Diane, don't mention your signs. We're good with them.
Diane, those signs are for installation, so.
We're good with you.
Part of the installation that gets approved.
Nobody cares about that. Nobody cares about.
Love your signs.
Nobody wants to restrict those signs.
We need to have a special, a special ordinance made so we could get that big sign.
Diane, we're good. We're good.
Okay, good.
Are we confused or what?
No.
Good.
I got a second from Jeff. I need Maguire.
Jeffrey's gonna make sure nothing happens.
I've done, I've done like five elections in town and we've never had a problem.
Let's vote, Jeff.
That will upset the town administrator.
Aye. Well, there you go.
Okay, so now we're on to, uh, this is gonna go very fast.
Oh, boy.
Taken early out.
All right. You know, the meeting, the meeting minutes for Monday, June 13th and Monday, July 27th, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The town's treasure report is available for everyone to read after that. Eric, do you have anything that you want to discuss on that?
Yeah, if you go down to the treasures report and then you look through the motions, there is a motion.
For.
Under.
For. Tell us what it is while you're looking.
So it is to do the final transfers from last year's budget to equal everything out and punch a bunch of money into three of the town's permanent accounts. The roadwork fund, the tree work fund, and the equipment fund, period.
Okay, and where is that resolution?
Uh, good question. Let me, in my minutes.
Save him. Come on, Amanda, save him. Where's the resolution?
The, in the appropriation transfers in the packet, um, under item 12 budget.
It's page 101 is what all the funds, the appropriations are. Um, and the motion is simply, I motion authorize the appropriation transfers outlined in the treasures report. This still has to go to the Board of Finance, but you have to approve it and then the Board of Finance has to approve it.
I vote that we approve the motion.
So if I understand this, Eric, I'll second this discussion. So Eric, you, you got, you got transfers going to which three funds now?
So there's a, a bunch of little transfers, but basically we're taking the excess, a significant fraction of the excess money that would normally go into the unexpended fund balance and putting them in capital fund, uh, you know, project capital funds. One is the road improvement fund, one is the equipment fund, and one is the tree removal fund.
So you have $125,000 of unexpended money in various funds that you want to put in those three funds?
Great, instead of rolling it back to the unexpended fund balance. Yep.
All right, and then you just, you have two other transfers above that. Those are just to move things within various funds or that, we're not voting on that?
So those, I, I think those are big enough that the Board of Finance has the authority to approve or disapprove. So they're gonna have to vote on those. I think conceptually, in my mind, what you need to do is vote on the big picture, which is whether you want to take essentially all the, the small pools of money that were unexpended and put them to use or whether you want to let them flow to the unexpended fund balance. That's the real question.
That's a Board of Finance issue. That's not even on ours. That's all.
We have to push this to the Board of Finance.
I mean, we can give them a recommendation, but it's all Board of Finance.
Great, so let's make the recommendation that we push them the way that Eric has, because they're going into three things that are important.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just clarifying procedural.
Let's go.
We could say no and Board of Finance can still do it, so.
Okay, so we made the motion to move it to the Board of Finance, so.
Agreed.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, Eric, anything else in that section?
Uh, not in that section.
Okay. Um, the budget, did those, a tax collector, a report, refund requests?
Yep, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight refund requests. Uh, that is page 105 or 106.
So just before, before you move on, the July deposits for the tax collector were $2,721,000. Did we have, show any falloff because of COVID?
Uh, no, actually, I think we're doing, the last time I talked to the tax collector and I, is we were doing pretty well financially, like we're, our collections are better than they have been.
Imagine if we'd been willing to take cash.
Could have been, it could have been epic.
Our infection rate, so I'm glad we didn't. Good job, Eric. So you got, you got those, uh, tax refunds. Are we gonna sit there and make a motion to approve these tax refunds?
So moved. I don't want to give any money back.
I don't either. Uh, I'll second it. All those in. I don't either. Uh, I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. And it's only because of this board that I vote yes on those things. All right.
You didn't,
Any of the department reports that need to be approved or talked about?
I voted against that.
I always voted against those. I did not like to give people their money back.
I never voted positively on any of those, any meeting I ever went to.
I know.
I mean, the only one I just want to bring to your attention too is, uh, obviously, as you are all aware, we've had a rash of break-ins. In a rash of vehicle thefts. This is a problem throughout the state. We know there are youth gangs operating out of pretty much all the major cities. There've been two really big busts lately. Um, one of them nabbed a whole bunch of people that were, I think, kids from Windsor. Um, they got nabbed in Rhode Island, like seven of them got caught. Um, stealing cars and breaking in. And there was another one recently, a theft ring in Hartford that got broken up. Um, another fairly large ring. There's a bunch of organized gangs doing it throughout the state. All the suburbs are having this problem. Um, the reality is they're not punishing the kids when they catch them. So until such time as we actually, uh, you know, do something to people who get caught, it's gonna continue. So lock your cars. Don't leave your keys in the car. Don't leave your pistols unlocked in your unlocked car.
Why are you telling us this? We're not the people that left our stuff in their car got stolen.
I'm just putting that out there.
He's saying it publicly.
Yeah, he's doing, don't you know that?
11:35 at night. Nobody's watching this stuff.
It's, uh, it's being recorded. Look in your upper left corner.
It's five hours long. If they,
On the record.
My lord.
It's your fault.
Of this type.
Okay.
I've been at hundreds of them. I've never seen one anywhere near this long. That's why I'm staying. I don't want to miss anything.
Dennis, I, I have to tell you, Dennis.
Too good. This is too good.
I am proud of you. You, you did exceptionally well on that, that section.
Cause I knew you would shut me up.
I thought you were at least 45 minutes to a 16 minutes in.
You were gonna shut me down anyway, Jeff. I know you would.
All right. Do we have anything else that we need to talk about?
Adjournment.
Okay, uh, public speak. Who would like to speak? Who's left? Shannon, you're killing me. Cut her off.
Thank you.
Let's go.
Good night. All I'm gonna say is I'm really happy that the board of selectmen went longer than the board of education. Let's keep up the competition.
Let's not.
Yeah, let's not.
Uh, anybody else? Andover resident, Andover, Connecticut. We all good?